Recording in progress. I will call this meeting to order at six thirty one P M. And I will just begin with reading through our agenda. Let's see. We will begin with public comment. Then we'll move on into superintendent chair and student remarks. Then we will go into a consent agenda which consists of, I have to look here. Consideration of acceptance of a five thousand dollar grant from M C I E A to the English Department. Consideration of acceptance of two thousand dollar donation from the Winchester School of Chinese Culture to the Vincent Owen Elementary School. Consideration of acceptance of two thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars and fifty cents from the Lynch Parent Association, Parents Association to the Lynch Elementary School. And consideration of acceptance of one thousand five hundred dollars Sarah from Sarah Swiger funds in honor of Lynn Vazella for the twenty twenty onsite vision bus. Then we will move into report, update and action items, including a W, the W H S G P A working group presentation. Special education programs presentation, subcommittee and liaison updates. Winpac liaison update, a finance subcommittee update on the F Y twenty six budget development. And policy subcommittee on consideration of approval of policy E F E civil rights complaint process for nutrition programs. Then we'll move into anticipated future agenda items, next meetings, an executive session. And consideration of Assistant Superintendent Jennifer Ellen Emma's contract and adjournment. So we will go back and begin with public comment. Let me see. Public and, oops, our blurb disappeared. I do need the blurb, Mr. Merron. Don't have that memorized. So, public comment shall be for a period of twenty minutes. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. Also, as this is a virtual meeting, we ask that our speakers turn their, their cameras on. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting and public comment is not a discussion, a debate or a dialogue between citizens and the committee. It is the citizens' opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. And written comments that are longer than three minutes may be presented to the committee before or after the meeting for the committee members' review and consideration at an appropriate time. Those remarks can be directed to school committee at Winchester P S dot org. And I will, do not have our list up on the side, but I will ask Mr. Hopcroft if he could keep track of any of our attendees who would like to speak at public comment and could also track the time.
Absolutely, I can do that. So it's and if people could raise their digital hands that want to participate, that would be great. And I will, hopefully my phone will, will sound an audible alarm. If not, I'll, I'll let you know. But if you could wrap up, so we have time to hear as many as possible, that would be great. So I see a couple of hands raised already. The first is Nora Cooney. So if you wanna, I guess we can elevate her and put on your camera and unmute. That would be great. And I will start when you start. You're elevated, but your camera's off and you're unmuted.
All right.
Wonderful. Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Um, well, thank you so much. And I sent a longer comment to the school committee and also Dr. Hackett to you this afternoon. But in case you haven't had time to read it, and also because I think it is really important to speak publicly on these issues, I wanted to make a comment tonight. I know this is a very sensitive and tough issue, and the district central office is very small. I know people wear a lot of hats and there are real capacity concerns. And I also recognize as a parent, I am not privy to much of what's happening behind the scenes and all that people might do for our schools. But the larger culture concerns that were raised in the literacy study report, I believe are concerning enough that they warrant a more immediate and swift action to address. Something that I don't believe has been done. It's been really heartening to see what the E L T is doing. I think that's a great first step. And shifting people out of roles, I think, is a great start to rebuilding trust in our community. And I understand that the E L T is doing some work to address culture as part of the literacy front. But the issues raised, I think we all agreed, looked like they potentially could raise issues of culture in the district that extend beyond literacy. And I just don't think that it's appropriate to wait to address that. I think, as we all discussed when the literacy report first came out, these should be done concurrently. And so while I understand it's very important to give things due process and be fair and not be reactionary, I expected to see the district hire a culture consultant or undergo some larger process to get a real sense of how far reaching the culture issue was in our district. As well as potentially undergo an investigation into claims of retaliation that were raised by both parents and teachers. Something that frankly, I had heard about the second I started to speak up publicly on literacy from multiple and varied sources and which were incredibly concerning to me as a parent, both from the teachers that I care about, but also as a parent, speaking up, it really chilled. At least I think I was nervous to do, and I'm someone comfortable speaking up. So I guess I'm hoping some of this is happening and has been happening behind the scenes. But I wanted to come today because I saw that district leadership contracts were in review, and I just wanted to say that I don't believe any district leadership contract should be renewed until that process has taken place. And we understand the larger cultural issues in our school and where the, the source of them is and how people feel. And that includes middle and high school. Because the study was very concerning to me and kind of echoed what, as a parent, once you start speaking up, you start hearing from people. And if we ever want trust to be rebuilt in this community, I think we just have to be pretty deliberate about that. And I know those are tough conversations and everyone works really hard and wants the best for our kids. But I, I have real concerns and I think until that's done, you know, it was very clear from the C E S report that people's concern was with the central district office, not their school leadership. And that's what echoed with parents here as well. And I, I just think that has to be addressed. And school committees, I know you work closely with district leadership, and I'm afraid you might have a blind spot there, to be perfectly frank. And you need to be taking a step back and taking a larger look at the culture and what could be the source of the culture and what we have to do to improve altogether. And again, sorry, Nora Cooney and I am at Tenonide Road. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Pam Court.
Okay, am I, am I on? There I go. Hi, Pamela Court, one twelve Arlington Street. I'm, I'm not sure what the status of this is because it's something that I read in Winchester News about the vape detectors. And I know that there was some concern about whether or not they'd be effective. And I just wanted to lend my perspective as a former parent of Winchester High students who are now out. I know that there was some concern that it's not really going to prevent vaping because if kids can vape in the bathroom and you make it harder for them to vape in the bathroom, they can vape in other locations. And sort of that running downhill kind of cycle that, that happens. They just find a new, easier place to do it. But I would speak in favor of those detectors for more than just making it harder for kids to vape in the bathroom, which in and of itself is a good thing because I think that it makes a statement that the school is taking it seriously. And that the adults and the role models are taking it seriously. It sends a message to some of the kids who might be on the fence and making decisions. As does making it more difficult for those kids who might succumb to peer pressure or just want to experiment because they're seeing it all the time. If they're not exposed to it in the bathroom, then it's possible that we may be able to prevent some kids from ever taking it up in the first place. The other things that I think make a difference, one of the things that was mentioned was that those detectors are emergency detectors as well. And given the current climate toward women, national discourse, including things like your body, my choice, having something in the bathrooms that makes our students feel safe. That's a place where kids get bullied. That's a place where kids can be attacked or assaulted. Having anything that makes it safer, even if it didn't detect vape, to me, would be worth putting in. And I finally want to say, I'm not going to mention which of my kids, but one of my kids is very sensory sensitive. And could not use some of the bathrooms in that school because the scent of the vapes was so strong that it made them feel nauseated. So just from the perspective of keeping our bathrooms a place where students feel safe from noxious fumes or anything else and, and feel that they can have a way to communicate with administration, I, I think makes it worth putting those vapes in place. My apologies if the decision was already made. I just wanted to speak in favor of that. And also issue a huge thank you to the Coalition for a Safe Community and all of the work that they do to support the health of, of families and students in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. At this time, Madam Chair, I'm not seeing any other names on raised for public comment. Just scroll back into the top. Yeah, I'm not seeing any other names. I don't know if someone else on the committee wants to confirm that, but I think we're.
Yeah, I don't see anybody. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Hopcroft, and I will close public comment at this point. And I just wanted to say thank you for your comments and your input. And then also I just want to acknowledge that we, school committee, had received a number of emails from members of the community. And that, and that school committee members have received them and we have read them carefully and we do appreciate your input. So thank you very much. With that, Dr. Hackett, I will turn it over to you for superintendent remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you. It has been a busy few weeks, continuing to spend a lot of time working on the budget, which you will hear an update from the finance, your finance subcommittee a little bit later on this evening. That really has been the primary focus of, of the work that we've been really doing. And I think part of what you will hear tonight also is some thoughts and recommendations around our actual timeline, which, as you know, generally has been that we have, you have voted a budget prior to January thirtieth that, that will not change, but I think we're, we're looking to extend the process itself so that we can make sure that we get feedback and input from parents, from teachers, from community to best inform our, our final, your final budget recommendation. So we are geared up to do that. Next week is a reminder, there is a, that is a public hearing on the budget, the recommended budget. That is starts at six thirty, that will be in person at the high school. And then to be followed by a regular business meeting immediately following the public hearing on the budget. I also just want to mention that tonight you are going to be hearing from the G P A, High School G P A Grade Point Average Working Committee. You have previously received their recommendation and they are here tonight. I have both assistant, I have Principal Mahoney and I have Dean of Student Life Anna Paradise. They will be reviewing that with you. We're not asking for any approval tonight. This is, this is the first time you have actually seen the recommendation and we want to make sure that you have an opportunity to fully understand it and ask questions. But I would anticipate that, I would like to anticipate that this will be back on the agenda next week on the twenty third for your consideration of approval or action. Just so that we can kind of make sure that people understand the timeline, oh, there's been community interest around this as well. So I do, later on the agenda, you do have two executive sessions. One is to discuss strategy for negotiations with the W E A or union, union contract. As you know, all, all of the units are up this, this year. We, we will be starting the process this month. And so that executive session will be to discuss some of the things that you are interested in and just strategy around the negotiation process for, for that, those contracts. Secondly, you have a, an executive session to, for non, for non-union administrative personnel that will be, again, that's also a strategy conversation that will be primarily to give me some guidance on some of the contracts that are coming up with administrators. It'll also be me providing you with information on Dr. Ellen Emma's contract terms that I will be recommending. You will be coming out after that and voting on Dr. Ellen Emma's contract. And just a reminder, and the committee knows this, but you, this is, you do not, you only evaluate the superintendent. You don't evaluate any other personnel. The executive session is not for the purpose of discussing Dr. Ellen Emma or anybody else. You, you are not able to and forbid to talk about individuals, even myself, in executive session. All your business with me, for example, has to be done in public. And that, this, the session is only for the purposes of hearing the contract terms that are being recommended. And then you'll be coming out in executive session and, and taking action on my recommendation of Dr. Ellen Emma. So I just want to make sure everyone understood the, the process itself. And with that, I am, I think that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Just from chair, for chair remarks. I was able to go to the high school parent P F A meeting earlier this week and we heard from Mr. Chris Nadeau, Christopher Nadeau, who is the World Language Director. So we got to hear a little bit about that and speak with Principal Mahoney. And then yesterday I had also been able to join the Vincent Owen Parent Association meeting. And that was very interesting because Amy Dillon had come to speak about anxiety and talking with students. And it wasn't, it was, she spoke about a range of ages from elementary school up through teenagers, middle school and teenagers. So it was an interesting topic and interesting to hear the strategies that she talked about. So just wanted to say thank you for having me at, at both those meetings. Also, just within the community, we have the Chinese Lunar New Year coming up on February second at the high school. So that is always a very exciting event. And then also for our committee members, we have the Wiffy trivia P coming up, which I don't have the date at the top of my head. I believe it's February twelfth, but anybody may correct me if I'm wrong. School committee does usually field a team of three. I personally am interested. I haven't joined that event many, for several years. So if anybody else would like to join, I invite you to send me a, send me an email about that. So, that concludes what I have. And then I see that we have Michaela here, Mr. Michaela Jens, our student council representative.
Hi. Okay, hopefully my microphone is working now. Sorry for the trouble earlier. So closing out the semester, Student Council is hosting multicultural night, where students will showcase their different backgrounds and cultures. We're very excited about that. And later on this year, we're, we're starting to plan our second annual TEDx event this April, where students will have the chance to speak about like personal passions and research. Yeah, so we're very excited for both those events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and then the only other thing that I would mention is, excuse me, I have a middle schooler who just came home singing in the background. I'll have to tell him about that. I had, I was also able to join the ninth grade earlier, or last fall, the ninth grade biology students and Mr. Lawhorn. And Ms. Ritchie had come to speak with us about some of the activities with their inquiry-based science learning at ninth grade. And they had also spoken at the time of their cancer fundraiser that they do and then send the proceeds to the Winchester Hospital for cancer research. I may not have that name right. Anyway, that also took place this week. And Mr. Nixon and I and perhaps other members were able to join that. And it was very, it was very eye-opening with the students' posters, the detail of their presentation, presentations. I was able to speak with a number of students and they also showed me their websites they had developed. It was very impressive and just the thought and the passion that they put into their work was really, was really exciting. It was good to see that what our students are doing. Okay, so any other questions, comments from the committee? Otherwise, I will move us on to our consent agenda. Okay, and I had already read off the consent agenda with a number of grants and if anybody had any comments or questions about that?
I have a question, Madam Chair. I'm not going to, I'm not going to move to pull anything off the consent agenda. I wonder if I could ask Dr. Ellen Emma, though, with respect to item A. We recently had a presentation to a school committee on portfolios of progress, as I believe it's called. I just wondered if she could take a moment to explain to us how this grant would be used. Are we expanding the program we already have? Are we simply sustaining the program we have at scale? That was a terrific presentation. I enjoyed it very much. And so it's sort of fresh in my mind and probably in the minds of others who watched our meeting. So if you don't mind, I, I would put that question to Dr. Ellen Emma, if she can just add a little bit of detail to this.
Sure, happy to. Yes, this was intended, when we rolled it out with M C I A across all of the districts that are participating, that it would be a two-year project so that we could, like as the teachers shared when they were there and the students, so we could gather kind of what we had learned from it. And then what should be our next steps in the year two of the pilot. So we're certainly adjusting pieces. And we had a great meeting with the superintendents, the union members, the union presidents from the districts, as well as people were there from the state, which was great, and from the M T A and the A F T. And just talking through, and this all ties in with our other conversation around competency determination and all of those pieces. How do we make this both meaningful and manageable? And, you know, what we learned in year one of the pilot was that it wasn't, you know, manageable enough to do all of that inter-rater reliability as much as we were between districts. So working with the consultants and the statisticians so that we can still ensure that what we're doing is reliable and valid, but also trying to pull into that manageable piece as well as certainly at the district level, as Carolyn and the other teachers shared too. One of our big focus things is how to have the students more involved in the process. A big part of portfolios are often, you know, the self-assessment and the culling of the materials that you, you think show that you've met the standards and, and what your thoughts and feelings are around that. So those are all pieces that we're looking at possibly rolling. So our year two is really runs, you know, through the end of this year and then work over the summer too. So we'll certainly come back and report more on that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
So Madam Chair, if no other questions, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C and D as presented tonight.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
And Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the vote is unanimous. And much appreciation to M C I E A and the Winchester School of Chinese Culture and to the Lynch Parents Association and also to our nurse leader, Lynn Vazella. For all your generosity. Thank you so much. With that, thank you, Mr. Merron, for updating that. We'll move on to report, update and action items. And we will begin with the presentation from the Winchester High School G P A Working Group. And I see we have a number of people in our audience. Let's see. We have our Director of Student Life, Ms. Parities, Ms. Paradise and Principal Mahoney. I thought I saw Michelle McCarthy's name on there. I just.
I've elevated, Madam Chair, just so you know, I've elevated Anna and Mr. Mahoney. Paradise and Mr. Mahoney, they will be taking the presentation tonight. So thank you for joining us and I will turn it over to you.
Can we do a mic check? Am I echoing again?
You are not echoing.
You are not echoing.
There is only one of you tonight.
The amount of anxiety I felt all day about echoing tonight was unreal. So.
All perfect.
Okay. So thank you guys for having me back again this week. I'm sure you are seeing enough of my face in the last seven days, but I'm proud to announce that the G P A committee has done a lot of hard work on this topic and that we have wrapped up and made our recommendations. And I'm here to present them to you tonight. So we can just jump into the slideshow. So again, for those of you who saw the webinar, you probably have seen this, but for those of you who haven't, I just want to go through it briefly. The reason the G P A committee was formed was because a concerned parent brought to our attention that our A was being equated to a three point seven on our G P A scale, on our C P scale. And this was different from sort of the colloquial understanding of what an A is equal to. If we all went to college, we think of an A as being a four point O. So we really wanted to dig into this and examine it, especially since we haven't looked at our G P A scale in the history that I've been in the district, meaning since I was a third grader. This has been, this has been the scale. So, so we compiled, we created a committee that had three parents, three students, one central office administrator, three W H S staff members, and then an administrator in the building, which was me, and I ran the committee. We picked, this is our current G P A scale. So everyone can just look at it. We have a two-tier scale. We have an A P N honors weighting and then we have a C P weighting. We equate a three point seven to an A on the C P scale. Every numerical value on our A P N honor scale is point five points higher than anything on our C P scale. So there's a consistency across that. And a few more notes about our G P A scale. We, no, go ahead, one more, Andrew. Okay, so we have that two-level weighted system. We calculate all of our classes into our students' GPAs with the exception of physical education does not get calculated into G P A. Learning centers do not get calculated in and no pass fail courses get calculated in. But all of our electives, all of our core subjects, all of that is calculated into our G P A. We have had this system for decades. We only publish weighted. Some districts publish weighted and unweighted. It's possible to do both. We do not rank our students, and I think this is important. I had a class rank when I was a student, many, many years ago. I won't say how many. But we have done and gone away from that practice in terms of ranking our students. It doesn't provide benefit to our students, nor does it provide benefit in their college applications. And we have always made a conscious effort to have our kids really focus on what they're interested in and doing and following their passions. We, we really believe success is an individual definition for each of our kids and they really need to follow the path that is going to lead to their version of success. So we have always pushed them to follow their passions and explore what they're deeply interested in. So we have sixteen town totals in our comparison group. Again, we picked ten of them because they're what the school committee has agreed to for negotiation purposes. And the remaining five were chosen because of rank and rigor. And you can see the list there, but those were Acton, Boxford, Concord, Carlisle, Dover, Sherwin, Lincoln, Sudbury and Newton, the five additional ones. The ten are the ones we negotiate against regularly, or will we do a negotiation? Sorry, that came out wrong. You can see, looking at those sixteen towns, that there is no one single standard G P A scale that any of these districts are using. Some of them are unweighted, some of them. Some of them are unweighted, some of them have two tiers of weighting, some of them have three tiers. Some offer A pluses, some don't offer A pluses, some offer A pluses and they give a higher GPA ordinal. Some do not give a higher GPA ordinal to A pluses. So there really is in the state, nothing that is super consistent about any of this. And I want to start by saying, if there was a magic sauce that any school district had in terms of everyone should do this for their GPA, this is the best thing for students, every school would sign on for it. And, and we want the best for our kids, no matter what we're doing. And it's just unfortunate that we have a very unclear sort of difference between all the districts. There is not one prevailing GPA in any of the districts that seems common at this point. We want to talk about how well our kids are doing and have historically always done. And we want to make sure that people understand that we have maintained our success rate in terms of colleges' acceptances. Ninety-three percent go on to college, eighty-five percent say that they went to one of their top three schools. As I said, there is no standard GPA scale universally. When I first did this presentation, it was brought to our attention that Louisiana's governor dictated that the whole state would go to a 10.0 scale. That everything would be done out of a 10.0. And what that would mean to you guys, if you have students in school is if they got a 95 as an average for the year. They would get a 9.5 as their GPA. So that's, that's just the equivalency. So we also know that colleges have to work with a global application pool. And GPAs are very different across this country. GPAs are different across the state and they're certainly different in other countries. And so colleges, for the most part, we can't say all, but for the most part, are used to dealing with differences in GPA. We did a data crunch of all of the 16 schools and looking at their GPAs. We did a larger search about GPAs. We looked into different advisory boards to see if they had GPAs. And everyone sort of returned it to the school committees and local ordinances to make their GPA decisions within the state of Massachusetts. There is no Massachusetts sort of recommendation. We then polled our students to see how this was impacting them because we genuinely do most of what we do to make sure they're having the best experience they can and getting the most out of their education. So we know that the students are a little bit stressed that they have to have a perfect A plus average to get a 4.0. If CP classes are making up the majority of their GPA. And an A plus is, is a pretty high standard. Many students take CP electives in their ninth grade year. A lot of them have two parts. So you might take ceramics one and then honors ceramics two. So, but you need to start at the CP level. Sixty-eight percent of our students responded to the poll saying they feel stress and anxiety around GPA. This number is an interesting number because GPA and transcript get convoluted a lot in terms of what's causing stress. And, and that's an interesting thing, but most people equate the two because the GPA is literally just a numerical equation of our transcript. But we could discuss whether the transcript is causing stress and anxiety too. Fifty-seven percent of students take the majority of their classes based on what the GPA implications might be. And students felt all over the place that either the GPA scale was unfair in one direction because they thought the A was the wrong equivalency rating as a 3.7. Some students thought it was unfair that we should have higher weighting. We should have more weighting. We should have three tiers, four tiers. Some think we should go to, to a 6.0 rating scale. So our students had lots of emotions and feelings about them. And what they were feeling in general was that they, they felt sort of negative about GPA overall, but for many different reasons. Okay, so we did start with the initial question. Should an A and a CP class be assigned a 4.0 on our scale? And digging into the first two data sets, the comparable communities and our student data, we came across four other questions. We decided we wanted to discuss what do we want our, the GPA scale to communicate about our values? Should WHS continue to have a weighted scale? Should WHS continue to issue A pluses? And should the number on the GPA scale be the same for As and A pluses? And these, these bottom three questions really came from the fact that looking at our comparable towns, they're all doing different things on all four of these different questions. And so we really wanted to examine that and understand what the community felt and what the faculty felt about these questions. And so we then went on to create a survey. And to address each question, we asked these four major questions of everyone that we surveyed. Should an A and a CP class be assigned a 4.0 on the WHS GPA scale? Our survey results showed that the majority of faculty and families believe it should be equated to a 4.0 on the CP scale. An A should be a 4.0. That's sixty-eight percent of faculty and seventy-eight percent of families that responded. In the GPA spreadsheet that, um, school committee, you have a link to, but that I've alluded to in the past. Of the 16 communities that we were examining closely, 13 of them do equate an A to a 4.0. And there are three, including us, that do not. But that would make us in the term of data, an outlier in terms of, we do have a super majority that do this. The Massachusetts Department of Higher Education also has a calculator that you can find on their website. And they do, if you say you're taking a CP class and you receive an A in it, they weighted as a 4.0. Just to, so this is supported by how, if you apply to a university or a state school in Massachusetts, they recalculate an academic core course. If you put it in, they would give you a 4.0 for your A and a CP class when they recalculate your GPA. So while there is no high school governing body, this is done by the, the Higher Education Board in Massachusetts. This is the standard they use for all of their state colleges and universities and community colleges. Should we continue to issue A pluses? Again, the majority of faculty and families said in the survey that they think we should continue to offer A pluses. The GPA scales from similar communities, these are really inconsistent. Some don't offer A pluses at all and some do. Some have unweighted grades and so they don't, and, and they do offer A pluses, some have unweighted grades and they don't offer A pluses. So this is all over the board. There is no one consistent data piece that we can point to and say the majority do blank. We can say, again, using the Department of Higher Ed's GPA calculator, that they do recognize an A plus as a distinct grade. So you can put an A plus in and you will get a different ordinal out than you would from an A at any level. Should the scales be the same? This one was a little bit closer, but the majority of the families and the faculty, a little closer on the faculty here, think that they should be assigned two different values on a GPA scale. Meaning an A plus should have a distinct numerical value and an A should have a lower distinct numerical value. Again, looking at our comparable data, this is all over the place. There is no consistent one thing that everyone's doing. Some towns don't offer an A plus at all, some offer the A plus, but they equate it to the same GPA number that they would equate an A. And, and so those are the two options. So do we, if you don't offer them or do we give them or do we give them two different numbers? And again, if you go into the Mass Department of Higher Education's calculator and you put in an A plus, it does give a higher ordinal for an A plus at any level, CP, honors, or AP, than it would give an A in terms of how it recalculates GPAs for applying students to that. Should we continue to use a weighted GPA scale? This one is, is more complicated. There's certainly been a trend recently in the last decade of, of schools moving towards unweighted GPA scales. The survey is fairly clear that our faculty and our families believe we should continue having a weighted GPA scale. The GPA scales from our similar communities, again, are inconsistent. We have six out of the 16 comparable communities have switched to or are unweighted and 10 are not. The committee searched for data that either definitively showed us that unweighting was proven to be beneficial in different ways to students or that weighted was proving to be different, to be beneficial to students in any way. Because again, all we ever want to do is do the best thing we can by our students. We weren't able to find any concrete data in either direction. We have schools that have gone unweighted and it has caused no harm according to the report of college admissions. But we, when we spoke to those schools as well, they also told us it didn't change any of the course selection patterns of their students, which means they're still taking the same number of AP and honors classes even though the weight isn't there to technically give them that extra GPA boost. Because they're still looking at their transcripts. We do know that the Department of Higher Education in Massachusetts does not weight CP and honors AP classes the same. They do provide a distinctly higher GPA number for an honors class than they do a CP class. And so they, they would recalculate an unweighted schools GPA to re-weight it with their formula. But they believe in weighting honors and AP classes at a higher rate than they, than they weight the CP classes. So these are the recommendations. At this time, we recommend that we assign a 4.0 to an A on the CP scale. It's important to note that that's going to change not only the value of an A on the CP scale. But it's also going to change the A and the A minus on the CP scale as well because those were sort of smushed in there. Because our scale starts at a 4.0 for an A plus. So to get to a three being a B, we sort of had extra things in there. So that would raise the A minus, the A, and the A plus to higher numerical values than they are on the CP scale. We're also recommending that we maintain our current two-level of weighting. So while we will raise the CP scale, that means also that the honors AP scale would have to raise to keep its consistency of being half a point higher and that's what our weighting is. So we're recommending that we have a two-level weighting scale and we're recommending that we continue to offer A pluses. And we do assign a distinct GPA scale value that is higher than an A to those. So what we're saying this would look like. You guys can see this chart right here and you can see each of the different in green, what the old scale was and what the new scale would be. And so numbers in green meant that they are higher than their current scale and everything in black means it didn't change at all. You can go to the next slide, Andrew. So this is just a condensed version of what we're proposing. This is what we would say our GPA scale should look like. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Mahoney in a second, but what we are recommending from the GPA Committee is that, one, the administrative team has already started to, but will continue to work with Aspen and Naviance in case we were going to implement changes, in case you vote to implement them so that we are prepared in the background to do this in the summer of 2025. If you accept our recommendations. We will retroactively recalculate the GPA. So we're going to graduate the senior class. They've applied to colleges, they're applying to colleges, their GPA is what it is. We don't want to make any of that different. We also can't change midstream in Aspen and just sort of put in the new GPA. We will graduate our class, we will sort of seal the class of 2025. And then we will put in our new GPA scale in our build, if you, again, if you accept our recommendations. And then we will automatically in Aspen, when we recalculate GPA or when we calculate it all, we calculate it at the end of each year and it is final grades. And so at the end of freshman year, a GPA is calculated. They do not see those GPAs however, because they won't see them until their Naviance counts are active. And their Naviance accounts become active midway through their sophomore year. Right now, actually, our amazing guidance team is pushing in and meeting with sophomores and sort of explaining the entire Naviance process. So when they get active, they could see their freshman GPA, they could see their sophomore GPA, et cetera. We have the ability, when you and Aspen enter a new GPA scale, when it recalculates, it has to do it for all the years because it's pulling from your transcript. So it's taking your ninth grade year, your 10th grade year, your 11th grade year. There isn't a way to sort of have the ninth grade class have one GPA and the 10th grade class have a different GPA. So it will retroactively calculate kids who already have a GPA. That's class of 2026 and 2027. And the class of 2028 will just always be under the new scale. And so when we start next school year, anyone who has access to a Naviance account will have their new recalculated GPA. That will be what our incoming seniors and our incoming juniors see. And then our ninth grade class next year will get their Naviance account and they will see their GPA when they get it. And the administrative team will work all summer to sort of mitigate any difficulties that we have between Naviance and Aspen and, and any of these changes. But because we are only raising GPA values, the equivalency values, there will be no negative impact in the sense of recalculating GPAs. GPAs can only go up from this change. They cannot go down from this change. So. And then any questions from you? And then we would say, Mr. Mahoney, we are now turning this over to you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Paradise. First and foremost, an important bit of business. The Wiffy Trivia B is on February 12th and the high school team will be there to once again get their crown back. We highly recommend that there are residency checks because we think there's been some ringers the last couple of years. So everybody's on notice, the high school team's coming. Secondly, I suppose more importantly, I do want to thank the committee. It was a great committee, truly bipartisan, people on all sides, people with different agendas. They came together, they worked hard. It's a, it's an emotional topic. Even though we know there's no right answer, it would have been great if there was just a black and white, you know, form or formula that everybody had access to, that everybody could do. There was one white, right way to do it. And unfortunately, that, that does not exist. It's important noting that it doesn't exist. And it's important to constantly remind ourselves that there's no perfect formula. If there was, we would be doing that right away. And lastly, I want to thank Ms. Paradise. She has done all the heavy lifting. I knew when we started talking about this in the spring of last year that this would be a perfect job for her. Particularly because she did grow up here, she did graduate Winchester High School. I won't tell you the class, but I was in the same class at Burlington High School. And she, she, you know, has lived and died through so much, so much change in the town of Winchester that she has a great knowledge of the history and the experiences of so many students. She's also a mathematician, so working with the numbers and really looking at this as a data problem more than an emotional problem. Really served the committee very well. So I'm very proud that she's on the team. And there's no better person to have on this committee than Ms. Paradise. I know she hated everything I just said, but it's all true. So the, the four questions, I'd like to go through them and then make my recommendations to the school committee to make it official. Should an A in a CP class be assigned a 4.0 on the WHS GPA scale? And I say, based on the work done from the committee, yes, I recommend to, to the school committee that Winchester High School should adopt a 4.0 scale for college preparatory classes. Second question, should WHS continue to issue an A plus? And I say officially, based on the work done from the committee, yes, I recommend Winchester High School continue to issue an A plus as a grade. The third question, should the number of the GPA scale be the same for As and A pluses? And I say officially, based on the work done from the committee, yes, I recommend to the school committee, Winchester High School continues to assign a higher GPA value for an A plus than an A. The fourth question, should WHS continue to use weighted GPA scale? And I say, based on the work done by the school committee and the like schools that have gone to unweighted scales like Weston, Wayland, and Lexington, schools that we generally believe that our students compete against in post-secondary admissions, I have reservations about this particular recommendation, but would like to accept this recommendation and recommend that we stay with a weighted scale at this time for the school committee's consideration. It is something that I think we should look at further down the road. And lastly, the actual GPA scale that was designed with the, the 4.3, 4, the four and the 3.7 as well as the 4.8, 4.5, and 4.2. I accept those scales without reservation and would like to recommend them to the school committee.
With that, do any members of the school committee have some questions for Mr. Mahoney or Ms. Paradise? Mr. Nixon, I see that your hand went up very quickly.
I beat Mr. Hopcroft. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Anna and Dennis, for the presentation tonight. Unless they would prefer to remain anonymous, can I put you on the spot? Can you identify some of the members of the, of the committee that did all this work with you? I mean, I, I know who a couple of them are. I, I guess I'd be helpful to recognize them if you don't mind unless they'd rather not.
Honestly, I, I didn't ask permission, especially from the students, to publicly announce them and I don't feel comfortable doing that. I didn't ask the parents either, so.
So, so that's why I phrased it the way I did. Differentials. So I, I know who some of them are and, and they know that I know who they are. And so I want to thank them for that. I, I, a couple of quick observations. I, I found it especially interesting to see how closely the teacher surveys were aligned with some of the parent and student surveys. That, that's sort of reassuring to me. I, and you, you've said this in the public webinar as well, Ms. Paradise, that the scale we have, we've had for an awfully long time. I don't believe that that's happened because we've been sort of negligent or not paying attention. I, I think you kind of, as we would say in Texas, you run what you brung. So we've, we've got the system we have. This is actually the same scale that I went to school with in the Texas public schools when you were at Winchester High School. And I think what's happened is over time, some of our peer districts around us reevaluated and made some changes that I think, you know, certainly I was not aware of and maybe school committees in the past were not aware of. I, I might just add a note with respect to that list of the 10 communities that you mentioned. While we do look at them as peer communities for purposes of negotiation, just to add a little more color to that. That, that was a list that was created some years ago and we have. And we have fallen back on that list multiple times for some really important community conversations and decisions. Uh, for instance, around the, the operating and the capital override a few years ago, uh, and other matters as well. In fact, we use that list, uh, when we do our updated enrollment demographic study. School committee in our community will, um, probably see some of those same communities listed when our updated enrollment projections come out. That's a list of commu, of school districts that we think are very similar to ourselves. There, we compare ourselves to them for many different reasons. So I, I just wanted to offer beyond simply as kind of a base point for negotiation for many different reasons. Uh, our school community, including the W E A, found that those were very representative districts. So I'm really glad that you, you studied those. I guess I, I might have, um, one more question and then a comment. Um, I'm, I'm assuming, given how powerful, um, Aspen is as a tool and, and Naviance. This recommendation, it's either budget neutral or if there is any cost involved, um, it's, it's insignificant. I'm only asking because as we go into budget season, um, this is clearly important to many of our, in our parent and student community. So I want to be sure we're adequately, adequately funding it, if there's any funding necessary, um, for change. I don't know if one of you can speak to that.
Yeah, Dennis, you do the budget, so I'll like.
Uh, at this time, we don't think that we'll be incurring any costs other than working with Naviance to upload the, the data set. So all we have to do is, um, make the changes in Aspen. Download that as a form, send it to Naviance and have them, them upload into their data so that the scatter plot is changed, um, for our student data. It's really just a mathematical, it's just a, it's a software update.
Thank you. Um, and, and because I know this is not teed up for something to actually, for us to vote on tonight, this is really an opportunity for us to hear you present. I mean, I look forward to what my other committee members have to say. Um, for the record, I'm, I'm very supportive of the recommendations that you're making tonight. Um, and I would, I would, I guess, be interested, um, when we do vote on this, which I hope will be soon for the end of the month. I'd just like to understand how it is that, that you guys might roll this out to students. Um, if this is a change that's coming, uh, maybe that's something it's explained to them in wind block or some manner. Um, I'm sure you'll do a good job of that, but change can also cause anxiety sometimes. So, um, just learn, looking forward to learning a little more. But obviously we have, kind of have to get to a place where we're voting. I appreciate all the work you've done. I appreciate the work of the students and the parents who contributed as well. Thanks.
Mr. Nixon, to soften anxieties, our, our whole goal is to start by saying, no students GPA will be harmed in any way. By this update, if it's recom, if it's received and approved.
We also, with everything we do at all at the high school, you know, the secondary educational component is such a key part of it. To make sure that our, our students and their families really understand what's going on. And, and through the webinar that we held, we really saw that there is some confusion about how to access your GPA, how to do these types of things. And so we've made notes on how we can be better community partners and help our families learn, um, the ins and outs of these things. Sometimes we, because we live it all day long, all year long, year after year after year. We know the ins and outs and we forget that some people don't live in our, in our actual brains. I even know the nuances of all of these things, so.
I feel that every time that I try to log into Aspen and find something, so. And I've been doing that for a few years now. So, um, Mr. Hopcroft.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, and, and thank you, Ms. Paradise and Mr. Mahoney and, and all the members of the committee for all the work that you've done. And, and this presentation and the prior presentation, which were, um, you know, I, I thought very clear and articulate and, um, uh, and, and really meaningful. Um, uh, a couple of thoughts, uh, Mr. Nixon had just mentioned the anxiety and, and there was a, a slide in your, in your deck early on. That, um, showed the grade earned with a letter grade and the numerical one to a hundred scale, um, which I'm assuming doesn't change. It changes really just to the sort of GPA scales next to it. And, and I know for me, you know, when you start talking about changing the GPA scale, it sounds like you're changing something substantive. And, and so seeing that slide in there, um, yeah, was, was certainly, um, you know, encouraging to say that, that we're just, just, um, looking at these, um, the CPA. You know, for, or four point, um, scale and the, the, um, uh, uh, corresponding honors and AP scale. During your prior presentation, Ms. Paradise, you had talked about Naviance, which, um, you know, my, my kids aren't quite to the point of applying to colleges yet. Um, and I was really impressed that the district had such a database that tracked, um, uh, fast performance of students, um, getting into various colleges, universities. And I thought you had mentioned, um, that one of the, the challenges with changing the, the, the scale, um, the GPA scale. Was that that data wouldn't be as useful. And, and given that we're at a point here where we're recommending changing it. I was wondering if either in the committee's deliberations or, um, as you looked at other peer districts, um, that might have also gone through. GPA scale changes if, um, you sort of what your thoughts were about how to mitigate any, you know, anxiety that may come. Well, first of all, was that an accurate statement of mine, um, you know, about, is, is this something that, um, is going to be a challenge for students? And, and if so, how are you looking at overcoming that?
So Mr. Mahoney and I actually, uh, spoke with Naviance, uh, last week to, to sort of learn more about this process. And, and as he said, we do have actually the ability to change historical data. It just means we would go back in for the last five years and upload. Then we can go back into the class of 2022 and export them under the new GPA scale as well in Aspen. So we could go in, recalculate and export it. Now that would make transfer students. Maybe a little nervous and we'll have to do some education there, but that would mean our senior class next year would be using Naviance with accurate data. It would be a recalculation of previous GPAs of previous graduates, but it would still be if, if. Jane Doe went to Clemson University with a three point six and it now is recalculated to a three point seven. Like that scatter plot under Clemson with our graduates will be accurate. So, so we, we believe that we have found a way to mitigate most of the sort of, um, transitional period by, by supporting our students and our families. By making a tweak into Naviance that way.
And it's important to note, Naviance received the call as if, it was like kind of ho, hum, we do this all the time. This is no big deal.
Excellent, excellent. That's, that's what I like to hear. And I, and I knew that you guys would be on top of this. Um, I was curious also, um, one of the, the questions that you raised on, um, I think. I don't know what slide number it was, but, um, there was a question in here that says, what do we want our GPA scale to communicate about our values? And, and I didn't see that in your presentation. I was just curious if, if you came to any conclusion on that or.
You know, so I think there's a, there's a lot of emotion attached to GPA and we certainly saw that in our survey results. And, and I get that. I'm a mom and as when it comes to my child, I mean, she has a concussion right now and is running around with sunglasses on, uh, being a cuckoo head, but. But she's twelve and she's at basketball practice, but anything that comes across my lap in my mom hat on. I get very protective and very concerned that I'm doing the best thing for my child. And I would think as someone who has been in education for almost 25 years now, um. I should, I would know the ins and the outs, but I will still call, uh, teachers in other schools. I will call principals and other schools to ask advice for what I should do for my child. So I get what it feels like to be a parent and wanting to do the best for your child. Um, from our survey results, it was very clear that the town, the parent community that answered. Feels strongly in having a weighted scale right now. And I think this is why, uh, Principal Mahoney said he'd like to investigate it further. There would need to be a lot of education around what a GPA scale really means. So again, Winchester High School doesn't use a GPA scale for anything, for any reason. It has nothing to do with anything that happens in our building. It is solely used by our students when they apply to post-secondary options. For the most part, we're not ranking kids with it. We're not, like, I don't even know what any of our students GPAs are. I could look at it, but I just don't know what they are. Cause it doesn't mean anything to me, uh, as the dean. So, um. It's hard. This is why we really looked at the unweighted question for a period of time. Like, do we want to say that we value everyone's A regardless of what, whether it's at honor CP or not at the same level, like with the same organ? Or do we want to continue with the weighted scale that we've traditionally had? We certainly saw that there would be pushback, a large amount of pushback amongst the, the community. They felt very strongly that we should, we should have an unweighted GPA scale for, for the committee to make the recommendation. That we go unweighted and that is the, that is the question behind what do we want our GPA scale to say about us? Should we say that we value everyone's achievement at the same level or should we say we value achievement at different levels? Uh, based on what is the supposed rigor of the course? We're just not in a place, I would say, that we really. Feel that unwating would necessarily be doing a beneficial thing for our students. I, I could personally give my opinion about it, but the community feels a certain way, the students feel a certain way. Even the faculty feels a certain way about waiting or not waiting. The state of Massachusetts feels a certain way. So what I think we sort of came to as a commu, community was the GPA. What we feel our values are about the courses we offer, the barriers to entry that we may or may not have to courses, those types of things. GPA is really external in the sense of like, this is not our core values. This is just a tool used for colleges to determine or try to standardize all students across the nation and across the world. Um, so we sort of step back from a, what does it say about us? Because our course of studies, our belief in SEL, our choice, our ability for kids to take risks and succeed and recover. That's what we care about as a high school, as, and I believe as a community. Um, so we decided to sort of leave that question there at a point and just say, okay, so for GPA. Where did we find data that we could do X, Y, or Z? And, and, and when we talk about what does it mean about us, that doesn't necessarily, it's not a data point that we could, we could. Put a pin in and say, oh, the data shows us we think this, or the data shows us we value this. Um, so I can speak for at least everyone I've ever worked with at Winchester Public Schools, which is like, we care about. What opportunities we give our students. And so we made the changes we made because what we care about is if it helps any single one of them. Because the school doesn't recalculate or because they miss a threshold, then we should do it, right? Then we should do it. It's, it sort of comes down to that.
That's great. I appreciate that. Um.
Sorry, Mr. Hopcroft, my, my reservation, which, which is a, as a, it is a reservation about going weighted versus unweighted. That's down the line. I'd like to see how, how this GPA change, uh, is, does it affect any change whatsoever? Is there any data we can draw? And this could be a, a few years down the line, um, because the work itself of reaching out to colleges, figuring out what they want and, and universities. And figuring out what their standards are, that's another very, very big lift and we're in no hurry to take on that battle right now. Um, so I'm, I'm talking a few years down the road.
Well, I, I appreciate, um, uh, you know, all the, the thought that has gone into this. And, and like Mr. Nixon, I'm, um, supportive of this. One other, um, uh, thing I noticed, and I think it might just be a typo in the presentation. But, um, on the slide that shows the current scale versus the proposed scale. Um, uh, it shows the change numbers in green for the A minus, A and A plus. Uh, but for the B plus on the CP scale, it shows it going from a three point two to a three point three. And I imagine one of those is probably just a typo, but I thought I'd.
Uh, the, the B plus in the current scale is a typo then, because the scales have to remain point five above each other.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you very much for, for everything you've got here. I appreciate the recommendation. And subject to additional information we may get, I'm generally supportive of, of this recommendation. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bergscho.
Hi, I, I'm going to start with a punchline first. I'm generally supportive of this recommendation as well. Um, there's a few, um, and just to say, we're not alone in this. My son's college just eliminated A pluses much to his chagrin. Um, so he can no longer earn an A plus in college and he's pretty disappointed about that. So, um, even higher ed, I think struggles with, um, how they are grading students and are always thinking and rethinking it. I, um, I'm curious about, um, I was curious also about Naviance, so I'm glad to hear that that is an easy fix. I'm curious about, um, student and parent education around this moving forward too. Because I think that, um, you know, uh, GPAs are also sort of a big mystery to both kids and families. And how colleges use them and, um, how they are, what part and what role in the transcript do they play? And so I would just encourage the team to not let the work die here. And to really, um, use this sort of as a springboard, as Mr. Mahoney said, to keep track of. What is beneficial for our kids and communicating the rigor and their success with the program at Winchester High School, the colleges. And how to best, um, um, use, use what they've learned here and what their transcript shows. Um, to think about what colleges are best fits for them. And or even beyond if they're thinking of options outside of college too. Sometimes that can be important and, you know, what they, what they demonstrate on a transcript. Um, can also help them create a pathway that, um, might be a pathway that's not college for them as well, or not college immediately. So I'm hoping that we're not just thinking of GPA as a number, but again, echoing Mr. Hopcroft in the value conversation. Thinking about how we value GPAs, how we use GPAs and how we teach kids the value of a GPA beyond high school. That it's not just, um, to compare ourselves to our peers, but really, you know, this tells a story about. Our, our journey through Winchester High School too. Um, so I'll leave it at that. And my last thing is, is I, not to put you on the spot, Michaela, but I'd love to know. Um, how, since you're here from the students and I know you may not have been part of this committee. But, um, we're presuming, we see the survey results from kids. Um, how do the kids use GPA before they apply to college and do they think about it?
Um, well, I think, um. Kids kind of talk about, um, GPA a little bit, but I think most students know that colleges recalculate the GPA. So, um, like everything is taken into account on their ends as well. But when I'm talking with my peers, I do think that there is some stress and anxiety around GPA. But I think having a different restructuring, if this would help the stress and anxiety of students, then I think it's a really good idea.
Are there any other stress or anxiety points around GPA that we should be thinking about?
Um, I think this adjustment is helpful too. I think, um. I think some students were concerned about the AP weighting too. Um, but I think, um, right now, like the two scale is a good idea. And I think it really just kind of shows like your progress and development, not really tying your value to it, but just how you grew throughout high school.
Thanks. That's really helpful. And I'm, um, any, any time along this process or anything that, um, you want to weigh in. Or if there's information to bring back, we always appreciate, you know, hearing from the guys directly too. So sorry for putting you on the spot, but that was really helpful. It's good to know that you support this recommendation as well.
Ms. Bergscho, we, we will fully dive into the educational piece of GPA. But in an ideal world, and I recognize that we don't live in an ideal world. Uh, but my recommendation is to not think about your GPA, it's to focus on being where you are, taking the classes that you're taking and doing the best you can where you are right now. If you do well in your classes, because you're focused on learning and improving and scoring, you know, getting high grades. That GPA is going to take care of itself and you don't have to think about it whatsoever. Because you're taking courses and that are interesting to you and you're passionate about them. You're learning and you're proving you're learning, your scores are going to be great. And then either you go up a level to a honors or an AP based off of a challenge and what you want to learn. That's in an ideal world. We don't live in an ideal world, but if we did focus more on where we are right now. How we can do our best rather than a number that is definable or undefinable, weighted or unweighted, used or not used. All of our kids would be much happier and healthier because they'd just be focused on the task at hand. Um, rather than a, an undefinable score that is.
Right.
That's an ideal world, but I think that's, we need to emphasize that if we, if we dig into the. Educational piece about GPA, facts and figures and the tru, what the truth is. And sometimes we give facts and figures and what the truth is and people still say, yeah, but, um, you know, what they, what their emotions are tied to. It's, it, it'll almost be a moot point if kids are just focused on the class they're taking, how well they're doing. And how they can do their very best. The GPA will take care of itself. It's, it should be one less thing to worry about than one more thing.
I agree with everything you just said, Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you. Dr. Matthews.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you. I think I, I was going to actually ask the same question of Michaela, um, what her opinion was. So I'm glad that, that we were able to get your perspective in. Um, so I'll just very briefly say, um, thank you to all of the work, uh, to all of those who have done the work on this. Um, I think it's very comprehensive. It's very clear. I love the fact that we've had a working group that included. Um, different members of, of the community, um, parents and students and, and faculty. that included, um, different members of, of the community, um, parents and students and, and faculty, uh, both, uh, at the classroom level as well as at administration level. So, um, thanks for your, your clear presentation. I think it was very well done. Um, and I fully support the recommendations that have been made. I think, you know, in, in the case of these kinds of decisions, for me, it's always best to have those who are most close to those decisions, um, make them. Um, and I think you've made very clear recommendations, um, that make a lot of sense. Um, and I think we would be foolish not to accept those. So, um, I just wanted to say a, a word of thanks to everybody who contributed to this effort, um, both in terms of the survey as well as, um, writing up such a clear presentation um, and look forward to, to getting this implemented when statutorily we are permitted to do so. So, thank you all.
Uh, Mr. Nixon, you said that you had.
I do. I just, I have one word, just an observation and a comment as Ms. Paradise was talking, um, about how, really how very, how very little, uh, recalculation of GPA directly affects students. One thing that, that actually did strike me as she was talking is I wanna recognize that an element of this discussion brought forward by some parents was eligibility for National Honor Society. So in Winchester, eligibility is a, uh, 3.6 GPA, and it's been that case for quite some time. There were some parents who I think approached school committee members and wanted to have a conversation about reevaluating the eligibility criteria for National Honor Society. Um, for my part, I felt it was more appropriate actually to look at more broadly GPA. The two are obviously very much related. Um, I, I'm assuming, Mr. Mahoney, you would agree that, you know, uh, because what this will do by consequence is it, it may raise some GPAs, however slightly, this, this will make some additional students eligible for National Honor Society. I think that's a good thing. Um, if that's the case, I, you know, I'll be curious to understand sort of, uh, what that impact really is. It'd be interesting to me to understand how many more kids have that eligibility. Uh, but that's an important thing for many of our students and, um, uh, and I just wanted to recognize that. I, I think we tackled the right end of this issue, the right end of this problem, meaning overall GPA scales, and not get into the weeds on eligibility criteria for National Honor Society, which I presume Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Paradise would agree, just like our high, our, our pure high schools have different GPA scales. Um, as far as I could tell, there's a wide variety of eligibility criteria for National Honor Society as well. So that is just as murky and requires just as much study.
Mr. Nixon, uh, right now, we'd like to see where the GPA goes. We're not in a rush to adjust our, our National Honor Society scale. That would be an internal conversation because it's a faculty decision. Um, I can assure you that we probably have the highest rated, the highest number of students in National Honor Society than any other school around us. We have well over 50% of the junior and senior class in National Honor Society. That's not a rigorous standard. Um, so it's something worth looking at down the ro- down the road, not right away. We're not going to immediately go into that conversation. We wanna look to see how GPA changes and fluctuates, um, to the benefit of our students first.
I agree with that 100%. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, well, one of the, one of the disadvantages of always being last to speak is that some of your points get taken. So, um, so at risk of having some of these, and, uh, I'll try to skip some of them, but Mr. Hopcroft took my question about asking about the values and what, what kind of values, but I appreciated the answer to that and respect that very, very much. Um, let me just see. I was also very, I studied the GPA scale measurement that, um, um, the committee had recommended and took me a little while to figure it out, but then I was like, oh, okay, this does make sense. And I liked the, um, steps that you had done along the way. Um, to, I, to identify the grading for CP and also for honors and AP classes. Um, let me just see. Um, as far as the weighting, um, having a weighted scale or an unweighted scale or the use of an A plus, um, I agree. I think that's something, you try it out now. And I think this committee and also this department are constantly, when something is implemented, then I think we constantly are coming back and reevaluating that along the way. Um, so, uh, Mr. Mahoney and Ms. Paradise, I wholeheartedly agree that I think along, over the next few years, then you will have the chance to collect the data and understand this a little more. Um, and then maybe at some point down the road, maybe more changes will come about. So it's very much an incremental, um, bit of, it's an incremental piece of work. Um, and let me see, I did appreciate that you had included, uh, the information from the Massachusetts Department of Higher Education and how they, um, how they assess an A plus or the, the scales that they use. So that was very helpful to me. Um, I'm sure Dr. Matthews might also agree. We are both on policy. We, we like to see policy. So that I, that was very helpful to me to have that, to have that bullet point in there. Um, and then just lastly, this is something that I had mentioned at maybe a year and a half ago, when the school handbooks had come to, um, school committee for, um, a discussion and approval. Um, I remember the meeting because I was in Italy at the time. I took the meeting from Italy. It was a very long meeting. Um, so it's something that I have been interested in personally. So I'm just very grateful to Ms. Paradise and to the working group, um, the members of the community who also took this up and expressed an interest, um, in it and running with it. So, uh, much gratitude to all of you. Thank you.
Michaela?
Um, I also just wanted to say that I'm like in support of this change and I think that it's really great because the surveys done by the GPA committee and Ms. Paradise, Ms. Mahoney, um, encapsulate many of the student and community perspectives. And I think that this change is good because it reflects those perspectives.
And as people often say to us, all the hours and the time you put into this, people don't always understand how, um, how coming out with recommendations like this, it sounds easy, it looks easy, and we know how much, um, as you described, Anna, there's emotion in it, there's a lot of research in it. And just thank you for the time, um, and the passion of the educators and, uh, community members and teachers who took this on. Um, it's, it's a good, uh, a good example for us of a job well done. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, as Dr. Hackett had said, we expect that we will come, we, the school committee generally has first, this first presentation, um, to the school committee gives us a chance to ask questions, take a look, think about it deeply. Um, we will come back to it again. And as Dr. Hackett was saying in the, at the opening remarks, we, um, intend to come back to this next week, January 23rd, at our regular, at our next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Doc, can I ask a Madam Chair and Dr. Hackett? So for parents who are, were kind of catching on to this late or saw the presentation tonight, if there are members of the parent community or students who have questions or concerns about this, how can they relay those? Do they go to you, Madam Chair? Do they go to the superintendent? They go to Mr. Mahoney, Ms. Paradise? Um, just in case there's any late feedback coming in, uh, what's a good way for the school committee to get that prior to our vote?
My two cents would be for them to go right to Ms. Paradise or Mr. Mahoney.
Very good.
I will say if we get any feedback, that we will compile it in a shared document and, and send it to the school committee. We're not likely to respond to that feedback because our recommendations have already been made, but we will hear everybody and send it off to the school committee.
I, I think that'd be exactly the way to respond to it, Mr. Mahoney.
That would be excellent.
Perfect. But sure, if you get any feedback, it'd be helpful for us to see it.
And as always, you are welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting, but you are also welcome to go. And it looks like Mr. Mahoney, oh, yeah, you can go home now.
I need to, I need to go to Home, I need to go to Home Depot to get plywood for my son's junior social studies research project, which is just a treat.
It never ends, Mr. Mahoney.
That's right.
Good night. Thank you. Thank you all.
And thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, it is 7:49 and I will move us on to special education program presentation. And we have the, we have, um, our special education director, Ms. Marlena Isalgas. And we have our assistant Fed supervisor, Fed Director, um, Mr. Chris Campbell.
I'm elevating.
And I'm not sure, I'm not sure if there are others whom you are, I cannot see all of, of everybody.
A small but mighty team of two.
Yes, and they will be providing an update to us.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you very much for that introduction and the opportunity to present to you all. It's wonderful to see you again. The intent of this presentation is just to give an overview of first impressions six months in. So it's really meant to be a snapshot of some of my observations, a review of special education data and some forecasting into the future about what some potential areas for growth could be. And I would also like to add that this is a collaborative effort with Chris Campbell, Assistant Director of Special Education and Out of District Coordinator. And so we will be trading off throughout the presentation. So here is an overview of some of the topics that we will touch on tonight, just so that you have a framework. This is an introduction to the Special Education Central Office. So myself, uh, Marlena Isalgas, Director of Special Education, Chris Campbell, again, Assistant Director of Special Education, as well as Out of District Coordinator, and Jeannie O'Halloran, the Administrative Assistant, who supports myself as well as Chris. Next slide, please. And this is the Special Education Supervisor Administrative Team. So we do have seven special education supervisors as well as one special education program supervisor. The Special Education Program Supervisor is a new position and she is currently supporting specialized programming at two schools within the district. The language-based program at Vincent Owen and the Connections Program at Lynch Elementary. Slide, please. The following slides will show special education data in chart form and I will explain what you're looking at at each one of the slides. So this chart here shows the distribution of special education staff in Winchester across various roles. Education support professionals, ESPs, form the largest group, followed by special education teachers. Other essential special education staff include speech therapists, school psychologists, occupational therapists, as well as BCBA's, our Board Certified Behavior Analysts, physical therapists and a transition specialist. So this diverse team highlights the district's dedication to addressing a wide range of student needs through specialized support and services to support students' academic, social, as well as functional needs. Next slide, please. This pie chart shows that 18.4% of students in Winchester receive special education services through an IEP. Out of the total district enrollment of 4,391, 807 are on IEPs. And a further breakdown of this is looking at the, the bright blue, you will see students ages three to five comprise 0.8% of special education students. And the lighter blue, ages six to 21, is 17.6%. And a brief comparison here to Winchester in relation to state numbers pertaining to students who are on IEPs. So this is DCE accountability data from 2023, 2024. That's the most current data that is available. What this suggests is that Winchester remains approximately 1.8% below the state average, which is 20.2%. So Winchester is at 18.4% currently. So we're slightly below the state. This slide reflects the disability categories. It's a breakdown of the percentages of disabilities that students are receiving special education services for. And what you'll notice is that the three most significant categories that we have in terms of percentages are specific learning disability at 29.2%. Health impairment, which most often is ADHD, at 20.4%, and autism at 14.7%. So these are the three most identified disability types and they comprise approximately 65% of special education students within the district. The remaining 35% fall into one of six additional categories listed. So as a district, Winchester is committed to supporting students within the least restrictive environment. And we will talk a bit more later on about our continuum of services and the commitment to inclusion. This is the Special Education Continuum. We do have a full continuum available to support all of our students' individual learning needs, ranging from full inclusion, partial inclusion, substantially separate, as well as out of district. Full inclusion support, just so that we're operating from the same definition here, essentially what that is, is focuses on minimal disruption to general education participation. So students are receiving the majority of their support within the general education setting. Partial inclusion focuses on targeted interventions while maintaining significant general education involvement. Substantially separate classrooms focus on small group specialized instruction tailored to meet the unique learning needs of students. And out of district placements focus on comprehensive services that are unavailable within the in-district setting. This chart compares the district's continuum data to the state averages. Winchester is in red. The state averages are reflected in black. And the first, what you see first on here for full inclusion, Winchester is ahead of the state for percentage of supporting students within a full inclusion setting. Next is partial inclusion, followed by substantially separate and out of district. So overall, what we're seeing is that the district's strong commitment to serving students in a general education setting is aligned with the statewide goal of providing the least restrictive environment. Out of districts placements in Winchester are slightly above state averages. So to address this, the district is working to continue to strengthen and enhance in-district programs to expand our continuum, to reduce out of district costs, including tuition and transportation. So next, Chris is going to talk a bit more about the continuum as well as out of district programming.
Awesome. Thank you, Marlena. Um, so we do offer a variety of programs and services designed to meet the diverse needs of our students pre-K through 22. The slide offers a few examples of what the district provides. These programs emphasize inclusive practices and personalized instruction, ensuring that every student receives the support they need to, to succeed. So going down the list on our specialized programming, we do have a specialized learning center. This is a small group instruction with individualized support aligned with their IEP goals. The focus of this program is functional academics, communication and social skills. Next, we have our partnership program, which is our therapeutic strategies and behavioral management program. This, this focuses on support for emotional regulation and academic achievement by addressing the emotional and behavioral challenges of students. Next, we have our Cont- Connections Program, which is our ABA-based instruction. This is the applied behavior analysis that is developed to help with social, behavioral and pre-vocational skills. The focus of this is designed for students with significant learning challenges. Then we have our language-based program. This is intensive support for language-based learning difficulties with a specific area of focus in reading, written expression, oral language and comprehension. And then we have our postgraduate program. This is for our students age 18 to 22. This focuses on functional skills for independent living, including communication, self-care and community integration. This program focuses on teaching students budgeting, meal prep, job training, transitioning into the community, um, and how to be a successful adult. Along our services inclusion practices, we have our speech, our OT, our PT. We have assistive technology, co-teaching in our elementary, middle and high schools. We have ABA, we have our BCBA's, we have our counselors, mental health professionals, school psychologists, and of course, evaluations. So looking at our programs specifically, this is the number of students that are currently in each of our programs, pre-K through twenty-two. So in our Connections Program, we have fifty-two students. In our LBLD Program, we have seventy. In our Partnership Program, we have twenty-seven. We have five students in PGP and eleven students in our SLC. So since taking on this position, I've completed a deeper dive into our out-of-district data, as well as the role. And I'd like to share that with you tonight and bring a voice and some more focus to our out-of-district students and families. So looking specifically at our out-of-district disability categories, you're going to see that this is our breakdown in this pie chart that shows the majority of our out-of-district students are identified with autism, followed by emotional, and then specific learning and health and neurological. Since publishing this data, we've actually added to our out-of-district student population, so it has slightly changed since we sent this out yesterday. But this data will help us to better understand our areas in which that we can build our in-district program programming in our special education. Next slide. So some of the complexities of our out-of-district. So we currently have sixty-eight students placed out of district, and they're placed in thirty different schools. They span three different states, from the Cape to Rhode Island up to New Hampshire. And each of these schools have unique policies, programs, and requirements. So this requires the Out of District Coordinator to oversee the IEP development and implementation for each of these out-placed students, coordinating with families, administrators, external agencies, and schools to ensure timely and effective support. So this role involves monitoring compliance with special education laws and policies, analyzing data to track progress, and guiding interventions, and requiring extensive case management and collaboration. Many of this, the students have had significant and complex need, and this is with frequent communication needed and coordination between families, schools, and the district on a weekly and sometimes daily basis. Prolyrally in conversations with neighboring school districts show that they have a one-point-oh out-of-district coordinator to manage this type of a caseload. Next slide. So transportation is an almost daily, if not daily, part of this role. This is where we are communicating with families and our transportation companies to ensure that our students are getting to and from school in a timely and safe manner. The role of the Out of District Coordinator oversees the transportation logistics for out-placed students and often addresses complex challenges like route coordination, real-time scheduling conflicts, intermediary between family communication, and managing these responsibilities. I'm hoping to ensure that we're having efficient, reliable service while minimizing disruptions and improving satisfaction for our students and families with our transportation companies. Next slide. So this just kind of gives a breakdown of where the weekly schedule of the Assistant Director and Out of District Coordinator is currently standing. So this chart shows that roughly seven, seventy percent of the position's work week is dedicated to out-of-district responsibilities, leaving roughly only thirty percent for in-district tasks. This imbalance limits oversights both in-district and out-of-district programming, if you could click. So this next part is out-of-district compliance monitoring, which is next to be added in and is going to now take another seven point seven percent as I'm going to have to be traveling to all of the over thirty schools in order to do program compliance monitoring at each of the schools, which unfortunately will reduce my ability to support the district to roughly twenty-three percent. The goal here is that we may need to transition to a full-time out-of-district coordinator to provide focused out-of-district support, address in-district challenges, and align the position with comparable roles in neighboring districts, enhancing compliance, efficiency, and student outcomes. In my time in this role, many out-of-district parents have also shared great ideas and hopes for how an out-of-district coordinator can enhance their child's educational experience and connection to the Winchester community. And unfortunately, at this time, I just am not able to get to those great ideas. Next slide. So in the next task that we'll be focusing on with the role of out-of-district is compliance monitoring. So just a deeper dive into this is that we're responsible for maintaining compliance with state and federal regulations, conducting regular program reviews that usually are about a two-hour observation within the school, including transportation, getting to and from there, and insurance adherence to the IEP goals and DESI requirements. This, again, is following up with over thirty different schools, making sure that we're collaborating and communicating to set up IEP meetings, making sure that we're tracking down, receiving, and reviewing IEP documents in a timely manner, and processing that paperwork to get home to parents, which has become a stretch in the capacity of this current role. The hope is that we'd be able to proactively communicate with out-of-district schools to address potential non-compliance in a critical and time-sensitive role necessary to prevent legal and financial risks to the district. Next slide. So when we're looking at maximizing efficiency, the current arrangement where my role is split between in-district management and other responsibilities, as well as my out-of-district abilities, just as fortunately is not sustainable for our parents, students, and our out-of-district families. With approximately seventy percent of my time devoted to managing out-of-districts, we're unable to adequately focus on critical tasks like district planning, professional development, and in-district programming and support that we had hoped to build in for our students and families through this role. Next slide. I believe that these points highlight some of the things that were reflected with the hope of the role of the Assistant Director and Out of District Coordinator. And by potentially splitting these twelve roles, our hope is that we can bring this, these points back to the district to be able to build in the programs and supports that we are now identifying that we need, specifically when it comes to both our in-district and out-of-district our abilities. Next slide. So we're going to talk a little bit about our professional learning and the new IEP over the next two slides. So we've had a very robust approach to professional learning between Marlena, myself, and our supervisors. So since July of twenty-twenty-four, the district has implemented a robust schedule for professional development activities to enhance the special education services. These include a district-wide rollout of the new IEP tools and consistent agendas across schools for IEP meetings, monthly department meetings with BCBA's and other guests participating and presenting, and increased training opportunities for supervisors with legal and administrative experts, and compliance-focused sessions facilitated by DESI. These efforts underscore the district's commitment to continuous improvement and alignment for best practices for our students, our families, and our staff. Some of the highlights here include having a, we had a summer twenty-twenty-four Special Education in District Retreat. We had a guest speaker, Carrie Stack, that came in September to do a great presentation for our teachers on positive culture, and we'll do three follow-up sessions, as well as our consistent approach to providing PD for our staff, especially focused on things that we need consistency on, as well as a focus on our ESPs on each session of professional development so far. Next slide. So the new IEP. So as most of you know, the new IEP was implemented this fall for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. This required a significant amount of support and training and passion from our teachers and staff. And I just want to take an opportunity in behalf of Marlena and myself to thank all of our staff for all of the training that went through last year in order to get ourselves to here today. This was a, an effort through, and we appreciate all of our families and their support as we've implemented this this school year. As you are likely aware, we did roll it out in the fall, and this included extensive training ongoing and resources for staff. We had IEP coaches deployed for the month of September, as well as supervisors and special education coaches completing a comprehensive six-part training series with a consultant, Alan Bloom. We also had collaboration with the multilingual departments kicking off in the summer that included multilingual training sessions to address diverse student needs. We've had ongoing professional development. We've had the support of the Alan Bloom App, IEP App, that has been given to all special education staff here in the district. And grant funding continues to strengthen staff capacity with the focus on student visions and the voice to enhance individualized support in the IEP process. These efforts demonstrate the district's dedication to a successful transition and ongoing excellence in special education. Turn it back over to Marlena.
Thank you so much, Chris. All right. So these next few slides will share my impressions of some strengths, as well as some challenges since joining the Winchester Public Schools. As far as strengths, there are many, and these are just a few that have stood out. The faculty commitment, number one. It is readily apparent day-to-day how committed the faculty are to improving student learning outcomes. Going into classrooms, seeing the level of preparation, that, an investment that goes into preparing lessons, that goes into individualizing instruction, as well as the ongoing collaboration that takes place. The community and the culture here really thrives on working together, thinking together, recognizing we are better together, and thinking through problems of practice, developing innovative solutions. It's really been wonderful to see and to be part of, so I'm very grateful for that. As far as professional learning goes, Chris just gave an overview of several initiatives that we have launched just since the summer, which is super exciting to be a part of. And I'm very eager to think moving forward about how we can add to that list and really continue to build capacity within, because the appetite is there. This is very much a community that embraces lifelong learning. And it's just really incredible to see that level of enthusiasm. Also, family engagement. This is another area that really stands out to me. Families are invested in the success of their child. There is a high value and premium placed on high-quality education. And it has been really great to see the participation that is happening in IEP meetings, to see not only being a voice at the table, but really digging in and being actively engaged in dialogue about how to go about thinking about supporting what their child's individual learning needs are and working in partnership and collaboration with the team of experts at the school level. And so it's really been just fascinating to watch all of that. And I had the opportunity to observe an IEP meeting at VO today. And it was, you know, really great to see the team working together to develop an IEP that was reasonably calculated to meet the child's needs to help make progress. As far as challenges, so we are not unique here. Many districts are also grappling with similar challenges. Staffing being one of them, we've had some success with filling some positions that were vacant since the start of the year, so very happy to see that. We've been persistent and really making strong efforts to continue to recruit and be competitive in that sense. And then not only recruitment, but also retention. Once we have people who are, you know, talented, we want them to stay. And so thinking about what kind of support do they need in order to feel like they are part of a culture that is welcoming, that is inclusive, and that they're prepared in order to thrive in their role. Program enhancement. So Chris touched on some of this when speaking about our continuum of services. And ideally, what we would like to do, our vision, which aligns with inclusion and being able to, you know, fully support the needs of all of our students, is to really expand our in-district programming. We are serving many students in district and with some ongoing support, professional development, looking at curriculum, that we should be able to expand that even further and look potentially at, for some students who are out of district, are there some that are at the point where they can step down to a less restrictive environment and return back to programming within the district? And so that is part of this data dive that Chris did in looking at the disability categories and which students are attending which schools. And, you know, based upon that, what efforts do we need to take in order to really shore up what we have available in district and so that we can bring students back so they can learn alongside their peers and be fully present within the community? And funding, again, not unique to Winchester, but just ensuring that we have adequate fiscal resources in order to be able to support these initiatives, including staffing, professional development, and maintaining compliance with state and federal special education regulations. So Tier Focus Monitoring is the former name. The new name is Integrated Monitoring Review. And so this is a compliance check-in that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be doing. Next slide, please. So an overview of the Integrated Monitoring Review. So every three years, districts participate in this process related to compliance, and they either participate in the Group A or the Group B. So what is going to be happening coming up for Winchester is we are part of the Group B. Next slide, please. And what will be happening, just a overview of the process. So the week of February twenty-fourth, DESI will be onsite, so conducting visits, spending time doing walkthroughs, interviewing staff, as well as faculty, parents, guardians, members of WinPAC, and other administrators will be included in the process. It is an inclusive process. There is a planning meeting that is happening with our representative from DESI next week on January twenty-second to have some more information about what the specific details will be for Winchester this time around. Next slide, please. A preview of what one of our next projects will be is Preparing for Extended School Year, also known as ESY. This is a summer program designed to prevent substantial regression of previously learned skills for students with disabilities. Eligibility for ESY is determined by the, by the IEP team, excuse me, based on individual student needs and includes services ranging from appointment-based drop-in support to structured partial day programming. So the planning stages for this will involve coordination of what the programming will look like, as well as recruitment of staff. And so we're going to start early so that we can have everything all ready to go by the time July rolls around. And to speak to an immediate need, Chris has already touched on this. So Chris and I sat down and reviewed this data and reflected on conversations that we have had with a variety of stakeholders, including staff, families, colleagues, and thought about if we were to create a three-year plan based on the information that we have available to us at this time, what would our asks be to help address the needs? And so thinking about how to really go about maximizing efficiency and creating our, to create the resources that are necessary in order to fully serve the way that we need to, it would be to create the full-time one-point-oh out-of-district coordinator position, which Chris gave all of the background as to why that would be necessary, to expand the Assistant Director position to a one-point-oh. So it's essentially taking the out-of-district coordinator position and bumping that to a one-point-oh from the point-five that it currently is. And then the Assistant Director position, transitioning that from the point-five that it is and adding point-five to that. In doing so with the Assistant Director position, that would really enhance our ability to focus more on that in-district programming oversight, doing program evaluations in district, and streamlining communication for vertical alignment. So looking at programming at the elementary strand, and then having a common thread between elementary, middle, and high school. The benefits of this proposed restructuring would address any existing gaps in support for both in-district and out-of-district programs, would improve operational efficiency to ensure comprehensive program management, and would align responsibilities with district needs, as well as comparable roles in neighboring districts. as well as comparable roles in neighboring districts. Another area that we are hoping to explore and pilot would be securing evidence-based curriculum that can be adapted to meet various student needs in some of our specialized programs, uh, particularly for students who have complex learning needs. And along with that, we would want to include professional development for staff in order to ensure effective implementation and of the curriculum. So that's a, a year one summary. Uh, for year two, taking this a bit further, looking at the current needs that we have and caseloads to add a one point O special education supervisor, which would focus on program enhancement at the secondary level, so middle school as well as high school, compliance oversight, improved support for teachers and students. And we'll also collaborate with the out-of-district coordinator and inclusion coaches, which I will talk about on the next slide to streamline services for in district programming, to add a one point O administrative assistant to support central office out of district as well as be uh, support for our student information system, Aspen. There's a lot of detail, particularly with the rollout of the new IEP. There is some troubleshooting that is involved with that process. And so having someone who really is a point person and has the, the big picture, bird's eye view would be very helpful also as it relates to data analysis, scheduling, documentation as wa- and helping to support some of our current administrative assistants by reallocating some of their workload. And another area is sensory supports. Um, access to sensory supports will help promote student self-regulation, allowing students to remain within the general education setting and will therefore also improve inclusion or in our ability to continue to support students within an inclusive setting. Year three, we are hoping to explore the idea of adding two inclusion coaches, one to support the elementary level and the other to support the secondary level with the objective of promoting equity and access for students with disabilities within the general education setting. Again, providing professional development and mentorship opportunities for general education in special education teachers and developing metrics to measure the effectiveness of inclusion strategies such as co-teaching and differentiation. And thinking about how to support meaningful inclusion for students within academic as well as non-academic settings. And a big thank you to everyone for your ongoing support for this opportunity this evening. And um, we're, we're very thankful. Thank you very much. Um, I'll open it up again to comments and questions from the committee. Mr. Nixon, jumping ahead again.
Well, I did, I waited three seconds. I'm trying not to suck the oxygen out of the room. I want to compliment Marlena and Chris, thank you for, for such a detailed and, and interesting report. Um, I've actually been really hungry for this for a while. Uh, you guys did a fantastic job. I have a, a number of questions I might circle back with you offline on. I, I'd like to maybe just make a couple of observations and then um, some questions. So we have three BCBAs. I've been on the school committee a long time. I remember when we had one. A, a real rock star. I'm sorry that we lost him. Um, today he is actually a school committee member in his home community and he is a high school principal in Lowell. Um, so we were glad that we had him when we did. Uh, these are tremendous resources uh, to any district. Because we have three, can you just clarify for us? Are they dead? Do we have one at the elementary level, one at McCall, one at the high school? Or do they just take the fastball pitches down the plate? Uh, I, I'm just curious to know how, how do we use those three within the district in terms of how we assign them to various students? If you could take a moment there.
Sure. Chris, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so each of our BCBAs is, is split by school. Um, so we have some that have um, the McCall and an elementary school, one that's just supporting elementary schools, and then one that's at both a high school and then an elementary school. Um, so it's split um, by first IEP and what is needed on their service grid and then by schools.
Got it. Thank you. Um, Marlena, a moment ago, you, you mentioned in some of your closing remarks on the ES formerly EYP, now ESY program. You mentioned um, recruitment of staff is something that you're interested in. Um, for, for those of the public who are not aware, um, this was an element of discussion in some of our collective bargaining last round. We made a real concerted effort to sort of go first to some of our staff and let's say proactively reach out to them and give them some opportunities for staffing at ESY and, and, and financially, in fact, to offer some incentive. We, we learned from um, Ms. Kirby at that time that, that recruiting can, can be a challenge for us and probably for other districts. It may not be a fair question for you because you're, you're so new to the district, Marlena, and, and even that change we made in the CBA, as you know, Chris, was sort of fairly recent. But I, I'm just curious to know, um, has that change been helpful in any way in addressing recruitment of staff? Perhaps it's too early to know. And if it is, I, that'd be something I'd love to follow up on later. But if you have a reaction now, I, I'd love to hear it. I think that was something that there was mutual interest in on both sides of the table about that change.
I think if we have the opportunity to build capacity within and to also honor the talent that we have in district by providing opportunities for continuity to work during the summer months during ESY that is absolutely the first preference. It can be challenging at times to, when thinking about recruiting is staff may have other plans or responsibilities. And so recognizing that uh, and certainly hoping that if we start our planning early enough that we're able to secure staffing um, in a timely enough fashion so that we're fully staffed for the summer.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, uh, so in looking at last year versus the year before, we did see an increase of staff in district that were applying for positions um, as well as especially our ESPs. Um, so that was another bump that was given. And so we were less reliant on some college students as we had in the past than we could be more reliant on our in district ESPs that are already trained and know our students to support them. And we're hoping to see that continue going forward.
Chris, I'm so happy to hear that. Uh, you know, the school committee just universally sees, sees the, the value in, in having kind of our in-house staff support that program to the extent that we can. And uh, and I hope that that trend continues and I appreciate those who have the interest and ability to, to step up and support that program. Uh, I think in the interest of time tonight, uh, I'll follow up with you guys later on other questions. I, I want to make an, an observation. I was so happy when I saw the slide that said we have seventy students in our LBDLD program. I want to thank, you know, former members of the finance committee, one of whom is now the Chair of the Select Board, Michelle Pryor, and others who, who really bought into the notion, if you build it, they will come. Um, there was a significant investment in that program at a time when it wasn't clear how many students we would get in the subsequent year. But we did hear from families how much they wanted to send their kids in district if we could only provide and build those resources. We did and they came and those numbers are just tremendous. I mean, I'm, I'm happy with the population and the other uh, specialized learning centers as well. But that number is just so um, striking to me. And I'm just so appreciative for all the people who, you know, long since stepped away from committees who stepped up and, and gave us that support. So I thank them for that. Um, but that's really a, a setup, I suppose, Chris. Just for an observation that I, I would make and something I'd ask you to think about. As you've talked about um, this idea of perhaps a dedicated out-of-district coordinator. Um, and I, and I think either you or Marlena use the expression maximizing efficiency. Um, I get that. I think operationally, that's very clear to me. One of the things that I struggle with though, and, and perhaps this, this isn't fair for me to think this, is that having a dedicated out-of-district coordinator is someone who I wonder might, if you'll pardon the expression, lose touch with home. Having um, totally understand the need for support. I wonder if there is an alternative approach, um, additional support, yes, additional FTE, but perhaps an opportunity to share, you know, some of those thirty schools that you mentioned, Chris, which is a tremendous workload. Uh, it seems to me it's very valuable and important for our administrators to be very much sort of aware of and grounded in what's going on in this district. Be, I would presume that y- you might be even better equipped to identify and react to and sort of advocate for those opportunities for some students who might actually be able to come back in district. It might not be as efficient, you know, in a very literal sense. But I'm always thinking about sort of what's in the best interests of students. And I think of our out-of-district program really as an extension of what we do in the Winchester Public Schools. And I have some concern it may be completely unfounded, that if we had a dedicated position for this, there may be some sort of connective tissue that's either lost or that's just never developed to some of the resources that we have in district. And I, I hope that makes sense. I, I, it's not at all, not throwing shade on sort of the expression of need for the support, but it, it's a concern I have sort of around that approach. Uh, and tonight may not be the night to sort of get into the weeds, um, but I, I, I wanted to throw that out there. Uh, and again, I just want to thank you for the um, tremendous presentation. Thank you very much.
Ms. Birch.
For your, thank you for your feedback and for, for that question. And it's definitely a, a very valid point. And in whatever direction we would ultimately land with an out-of-district coordinator, we're in full agreement that that individual would need to be fully part of the central office team as far as regular meetings and, you know, folded into those conversations. So however that plays out in the future, we're in agreement with you on that about having that connection and that, that knowledge and finger on the pulse.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
And perfect lead in for me, Mr. Nixon, because I was going to um, throw my support behind a full-time out-of-district coordinator. In twenty eighteen, WINPAC um, worked with our special ed department to advocate, in fact, for the out-of-district coordinator that we have had in the past in the district. Because the glue that Mr. Nixon talks about is important for kids and families too. And when there's not a dedicated person in our office like Mr. Campbell's able to provide now, uh, parents were often confused about who to contact, who monitored their IEP, how to get back in district if they wanted to bring their children back, you know. Um, not all of our children are outplaced with the idea that they will be outplaced from our district forever. So, but creating pathways to know what the process is for returning to in district placement is important too. And having someone that children and families can trust and look to and rely on, I think is just such a valuable piece of our special education staff and network. So um, I know this is something that um, you know, uh, that families that did not have one were desperately seeking. So um, understanding that those families are part of our community and part of our district, they don't stop being part of our district because they go outplaced. So I appreciate your advocacy for that, Mr. Campbell. And I can see how your other uh, parts of your job could be diminished because I see incredible value in that portion of your job and the connection you're able to provide for, for families. So not really a question, but as much as a comment on that. So I appreciate you raising that. Um, the um, in district programs um, expansion is also really interesting to me that you spoke about. Um, that is one way that we may be able to bring families um, back into districts. They may go from an out-of-district placement to an in district program and maybe even be able to transition back into a full inclusion setting in our district. And that could be a stepstone for them if we had the space and the programming to be able to do that. Um, my question is, when you think about in district programming, um, from a budgeting process, what kind of spaces are, are spaces maxed out? Do we have room in the spaces that we have now to um, bring more students into them? Or are we looking at more dedicated classroom spaces and staffing to be able to provide that? Or is it too early to tap?
I think we need to continue to monitor some, for some of the programming, there is currently space. We do have areas for, for growth as well, just thinking about professional learning for, for staff. Curriculum is another area for some of the programming. Uh, but looking at the numbers, there are some um, programs that are at fuller capacity. So we would, of course, make room um, for any child who needs that support. Um, we would provide it, but looking at, you know, capacity wise, it's definitely something to be mindful of moving forward.
Thank you for that because I, I want to make sure that um, if we have, if we have the need and the interest in doing that, that we are also thinking about, in particular, our elementary buildings and making sure that um, when we're planful about our enrollment and growth in that, that we um, that we can imagine um, those children being part of those buildings as well. So um, whatever more information you can bring for, to us when you, um, as you're thinking through that process, that would be great to know for our space planning as well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Matthews? Thanks so much, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you both, Marlena and Chris, for, for your presentation tonight. It's been great to hear from you. I uh, I like you, Marlena, I was sort of new um, at the time, we, almost brand new to the committee when you, you came on board. So it's sort of nice to see that six-month retrospective view of, of what's going on in special ed and, and see the progress that we've made um, with your, your new leadership and having you on board as well, Chris. Uh, I, I, I wanted to just really briefly touch on um, the, the three-year plan that you sort of outlined here. Um, and in the event that there are, you know, sort of discussions, I'd, I'd love to hear sort of your idea. Obviously, there's a, you know, sort of desired state and then there's the, you know, the sometimes challenging and unfortunate realities of, of actually putting together a budget. And so um, I, I'd love to sort of ask you two quick questions. One of them, hopefully quick questions, one of them is, you know, the extent to which you um, sort of think about, you know, obviously, this is the desired three-year state, but um, are, you know, sort of are there modifications that might be made um, in the event that we are able to secure some funding but not all? Or um, you know, sort of funding in later years that isn't as available in earlier years? Sort of where do you see the sort of points of um, flexibility um, in terms of actually sort of maximizing? If we're able to get a certain amount of dollars, um, sort of maximizing our ability to, to make a difference um, within that, that. And I, I think the second question I would have for you is, you know, sort of, do you see? Um, I think this sort of picks up on something Michelle was just saying. I, you do, do you see opportunities to sort of save money um, by investing, right? Cause I think there's definitely um, a strategic, uh, when you invest strategically, you can, you can often find some economies as well. And I'd love to sort of hear uh, more about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much um, for your comment and for your question. And yes, absolutely. So as far as the plan goes, it is very much flexible um, and open to suggestion, collaboration, revision with the acknowledgement that this is very much uh, a snapshot at this moment in time. So only six month, six months in, things can certainly evolve and shift. Um, and we are very aware and open to that. We do see the Assistant Director and Out-of-District as a real priority area of focus now. And just to your point about being proactive and thinking about savings when we're able to support more students in district and/or provide opportunities for students to step down into a less restrictive setting and be supported in district, then that is long-term. And long-term and short-term, there's an investment attached to it. But the long-term payoff is there as far as providing savings. Um, and then also doing what's right for kids, um, so that they're able to be educated um, you know, within their home community, because there are so many benefits above and beyond um, the, the academic instruction, there's the social piece, there's the friendship piece. Um, and, and all of that is just so meaningful and, you know, absolutely needs to be at the forefront of when we're making these decisions.
The strain on families of traveling long distances. I mean, it's, I think one thing I'll I think one thing I'll highlight from your presentation, which folks may not have heard, but. The 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 states in which our out of district students are currently being educated range from, I believe it was New Hampshire to Rhode Island. Which is, you know, very far indeed from Winchester. And I think many in the community may not realize that that folks are traveling that far. To have their children educated in the the most appropriate environment. So um, thank you for centering the the students of our district.
Thank you. Mr. Hopcroft.
Yeah, well, well, thank you. I I I primarily wanted to to thank you, Marlena and Chris for uh your presentation and all the work that you've done. You've really hit the ground running here. So um, I thank you for that. You know, I also uh want to echo the comments of my fellow committee members. You know, certainly. We want to keep kids in the district as much as we can. And I think Mr. Matthews raises a good point about, you know, thinking about. Of investments that we make in order to meet the current needs of our students versus um additional investments we might make. To, you know, be able to not only uh create efficiencies of scale, but um uh having in district programming. But also just to keep our kids here, as as I think he was eloquently saying, you know, you're riding on a bus up to New Hampshire or Rhode Island is not. Uh, the world's best experience, um unless you absolutely have to for service. So I I I wanted to to just echo that. And uh, in particular, as we're thinking about, you know, our three to five year plan and and um. Yeah, I think uh this is this is really helpful and I I encourage you to to keep sharing um this information with with the the leadership team. Um, and and again, particularly, I I think of it in terms of. You know, where are there uh any uh gaps or or deficiencies in what we need to deliver? Um, and I'll say today, but really um for our expected population in the near term. Versus where are some things that a, you know, a community like Winchester. You know, might have the foresight to invest further, um, you know, and and I might slightly separate those into two buckets so that when we're. You know, looking at strategic decisions around uh budget, we can um figure out what what really needs to get plugged right now and. What's an opportunity that's going to save us longer term. But uh, but on the whole, I'm very impressed and and appreciate all the work that you guys are are putting into this. And so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I'll just say, I I really appreciated the inside view of how your time is utilized, um, Chris. And I'll and also what we can, what the district can and can't do. As a result of the responsibilities that you carry. That is. I had not really seen that presented um before, so that is very eye opening to me. And also, I think. I appreciated the three year. Time frame timeline and the way you had listed um the needs that you've identified. Over the three years. I definitely think that this is something that's being talked about. Just from what I've been listening to in the finance, in our finance subcommittee meetings. And I think one of the things that I've heard is um and what from and from Dr. Hackett is just talking about. What we would like to do and what we can afford to do. And so I like that you have prioritized this and that you've also extended it over three years. And I also encourage you to keep talking about this with the leadership and with Dr. Hackett. So that we can bring these things forward.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Quick question, Marlene. Yeah, just a quick question, Marlena. When do we expect to have the information back from Desi about the integrated program review?
That is a great question. I would have to get back to you on that.
No worries.
The the first meeting is next week, and so hopefully we'll have some more clarity then.
Oh, yes, um, Dr. Hackett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to publicly state what a great job both Marlena and 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 Chris are doing. Um, as they know. They are integral part of our central office team. We meet regularly, uh, we meet weekly uh for the most part. Um, and we are always in full discussion around how, what we can do to to really help improve programs for kids. They have a direct line to myself, to Dr. Ellen Emma, uh, to business manager, uh, I'm sorry, finance director, Mr. Marin. They they're also present in those meetings. So um, that it has been. It has been impressive to me uh how quickly uh they've really been able to get their hands around some of the issues that you heard tonight. And I I appreciate very much that they, that the thoughtful recommendations that they're making. You will, you will obviously be seeing those as part of our budget recommendations. And that they made those recommendations with the under with an with the idea of this is, it is a longer term plan. Thank you.
For sure.
Also, welcome to stay for the entire meeting, Mr. Campbell, this Isaga's, but you're welcome to go too.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Right. It is eight forty-six and we are on to subcommittee and liaison updates, beginning with our WIMPAC liaison update. This is a good segue from our special education. Ms. Bergstrom. We're gonna call on you for a few things now.
Okay. We, WIMPAC has been meeting regularly. Um, Mr. Salgas has been um attending their meetings. And occasionally, Dr. Hackett has been there as well. They are really um. Organizing around having some events that they have up on their website. If um folks want to take a look there. They're looking at bringing in um some experts in the field to um talk about um some ways parents can support their kids. That have needs that um. They want to find um. Find more resources to be able to uh to help with them at home and at school. And so that's really exciting. They have three upcoming in the next couple of months. The WIMPAC has also been, um, I I know that they reached out and. Mr. Matthews has agreed to speak at one of their future meetings as well. They invite all the school committee members to visit. WIMPAC meetings in the future if um people would like to attend. Certainly, I am always at their meetings or Mr. Hopcroft is as the WIMPAC rep, so. You know, it does not violate open meeting law for us to attend and listen in either if anybody is ever interested. So um, even if two of us are speaking, there can still be um members of the committee in the audience, so. They always welcome participation by school committee members. Trying to, there was one more thing. Oh, they also have a uh parent group upcoming. On an LBLD discussion, and that is a parent support group. So they're thinking about that in terms of. How parents can support each other um that may have some of the similar concerns and sort of brainstorm together. So they're looking at running more events, more support groups. They're certainly always looking for more volunteers. Um, if we have any um families that are listening into our meetings. Who are, have children with special needs or interest in um WIMPAC programming. Please do go to their website and check that out. They would love to have you participate. I know they are also looking to support um our teachers of our special education teachers. And how are working with Marlena to think about ways around that too. So they're pretty busy right now. Um, they're a small but mighty group. There's, their board is four members and they are um working really hard with the four of them right now. To try to build interest and capacity among parents in the district. And I'm happy to take any questions about that also.
I think it's a great slate of programs that they have coming up. Those are very interesting topics.
And that's, that is my report on behalf of the WIMPAC meeting.
Okay, finance subcommittee. Switching hats.
Um, Dr. Hackett, would you like, does Mr. Marin have slide, the slides for us today on that, or?
I see them popped up onto the screen.
Excellent, thank you. So in this week's finance subcommittee meeting, we um, I'm gonna jump to the budget development first. Just again, just jump momentarily to the budget development, Mr. Marin. And come back to this at the end. Can we go ahead a few slides? Who's got these? So as we've talked about, um, we continue to discuss the maintenance of effort budget. That Dr. Hackett um have presented to us that includes the level services um going forward for FY twenty-six. We have been sort of thinking a lot about um how we are presenting the information. And Mr. Marin, as we had talked about before, had um redistributed the column moves out of the central office. Into the schools, um, and the transportation budget into the into line one twenty-five. So that we have a little bit more clarity around where the column moves and where transportation is falling in our budget. So you can see that reflected here. Um, the other thing that um we had asked Mr. Marin to do. And is new in this version that you're seeing is in line one twenty-one. We have reclassified the digital learning staff and assigned them to the the budget lines for them. To the schools that they are serving as well. If they serve multiple schools, then they've split it across multiple buildings. So when you see the information technology line here and that um, the correction in uh the change line there. That's been redistributed into buildings and the information technology. Now, Mr. Marin, remind me what. Is only represented in that category now.
So there now you have four technicians, administrative assistant, or information specialists. Focus on Aspen, so those six FTEs remain in the IT budget. And then along with any of the. Uh, those other expenses for sort of district wide subscriptions, you know, payments for Google. And some of that curriculum software that's managed district wise remains in that budget.
But the staff that has direct contact with kids in any of the applications that are building based or in the building budgets, is that correct?
Right, so that's those five FTEs that are now at those building levels. So you'll see an increase. There's like a director and coordinator line at those school budgets.
So I'll stop there for a minute in case anybody has any questions about any of that. But other than that, that is the only thing different from the last time we looked at this. Okay, see none? We can move on. So this is um the conversation that we have been having at subcommittee and the committee level about our budget timeline. And how we um present the budget both to the um, the boards in town. So FinCom to the town manager, to the select board, but how we also um encourage transparency and communication with the community on this. So Dr. Hackett has presented us a level services budget. We are fast approaching the um budget hearing. Which will be on that level services budget. And that is uh what we will be taking a vote on at the end of this month. This is really the, the process that we have been um using the last few years. And through conversations with Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin, it just makes a lot of sense for us as a committee to be communicating that out. And um clarifying that for people in the community. We are still presenting a level services budget to the town manager. We are still intend to engage with the finance committee regarding our budget. But what we would like to do more purposefully is be thoughtful about how we're taking input on our budget. So in the past, um, we had a public hearing and then shortly following that, we had the vote on the budget. Which didn't give us a lot of opportunity to align. Um, Mr. Marin, can you move to the um, to the graphic on our budget? So.
Actually, Ms. Bergstrom, could I just interject one?
Yeah.
Could you just clarify for our, for our audience members, um, what a level service budget is?
Right.
It's probably self explanatory, but.
And and I'm gonna turn that one back to Dr. Hackett because he is really concise about.
That's right. Okay, thank you.
So this is, it's um, it's this, we kind of have the conversation around this. It it um. How we define a level services budget, because there are districts that define it differently. Uh, there are some interchangeable terms um that are out there, but what we define as a level services budget. Is a, the the budget that essentially, if school open, when school opens, we will be able to provide the same level of services. To our students that we currently provide. So for example, um, this budget includes adjustments made. For any, for for changes in enrollment. Uh, it includes uh considers and includes the retirements that we know of. And as you know, and the committee's been through this before, uh oftentimes, we have a retirement. When we go back and we, when we go out to hire or to replace the position, those, the generally, the uh, the the replacement. Or the teacher who replaces the teacher who is retired comes in at a, at a lower salary level than the teacher who retired. So we call that breakage. Uh, that is accounted for in this budget. And we've accounted for known costs in uh transportation, increased contracts. Uh, and we've also um included uh in a, in allocation for our anticipated. But um contract negotiations with all five of our units. Clearly. That could change. Uh, we have not yet started those contract negotiations. And we will kind of to the point that's being made here. There's just a lot of information that we don't have, including that one, which is really the biggest one. But we have included uh um an allocation for that. For that process. Um, and we'll see uh where that lands. But that that is really in a nutshell. What, how we define a level services budget. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
So, so as you can see, um, we have made it through the September to December. Those parts are grayed out of this timeline. So we um with Mr. Marin's help have created this timeline that really articulates. And um memorializes the process that we use. So um, we had a budget summit. Typically, we might also have those in November and December. We had our first one this year in January. That happened very recently with the town, FinCom, capital committee and Winchester Public Schools. To um see where everybody is right now, um, given the assumptions that they they know about. We will have the school committee uh public hearing on this level services budget and then vote that level services budget um at the end of January. To sort of also articulate some of the things that are knowns and unknowns for us. Governor Healy won't submit the FY twenty-six budget to the House of Representatives till the end of January as well. So we um don't have any oversight or state funding when we're having our public hearing on the twenty-third. Of what um, uh, what those numbers are really gonna look like and how that's gonna affect schools for the coming year. Um, in February, March is really the time we intend to dig in on the community feedback and recommendations. There's already been a survey that has gone out to all of the staff in the district. And Dr. Hackett has the feedback from that. And he and the committee will be following up and trying to get some more specific thoughts. From the staff around um what their needs are and their reaction to our level services budget. And we will continue with continued um community input, including Winchester, public school families, WIMPAC, parent associations. We may try to think around how to reach out to um the student council at the high school. And um try to see if there's a way to bring some student voice into this process as well. And we will get um intend to have that process by about mid-February. Um, that would still give the committee enough time to process through that feedback, to think about it, to understand Dr. Hackett. And the leadership team's recommendations about our budget with the goal of voting a school committee recommended budget then on March fifteenth. with the goal of voting a school committee recommended budget then on March fifteenth. Um how that fits in with the other things going around town is uh town meeting preparation will then happen in April as we continue to work with the finance committee and select board to ready the budget for town meeting approval. And in May, uh the financial articles are taken up after May first at town meeting. And um that is about the time that the final FY twenty six state budget bill is voted in the state senate as well. Um so as we are working through our budget, the state will be um bringing their budget through the House and the Senate. We'll get more clarity around that. We'll have time to get more clarity um from all of the stakeholders in the district and um really be able to present a collaborative budget to the community and the and town meeting. And Mr. Hopcroft and I, and Mr. Marin, and Mr. Hack, Dr. Hackett and I are happy to take any questions on any of that. I know that the committee has already talked about this and sort of reached consensus around this process, around the articulation of this process. But we're happy to keep talking too. Mr. Nixon, I saw your mute go off.
So I I think this is a great graphic and I appreciate whoever put this together. Um it 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 seems almost suitable even to go out to the community through Parents Square. If I don't know if that was the the plan, Dr. Hackett, or you had, Ms. Bergstrom. Um i- if it is shared whether through Parents Square or on the website, my only suggestion might be, um I think two lines warrant highlighting, which is the line on January thirtieth, school committee votes on level services budget. If that is highlighted, then we could perhaps highlight, and I know you did it in bold, down below, March fifteenth, school committee to vote on a recommended budget. To make very clear graphically, we're now, what we're proposing is two budget votes. Um I think of the level services budget as sort of a floor. And and then we will hear from the community. Uh I like your idea, Ms. Bergstrom, perhaps even going to the students, uh get some input. I think that actually would be terrific. Um and we just need to be very, we need to be very deliberate. Um and 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 sort of solicit, if you will, some input from the community. I appreciate that when we do have our budget hearing, we usually do have some members of the public who come and talk. Um but to be fair, it's not a huge group, um and there are also some very familiar faces. Um and I love to see them, but these are folks who really are dialed into our process. They know how it works. I think without exception, they're all town meeting members. Not everybody has that sort of perspective, and I certainly appreciate the input from from any parent in this community, whether or not they're a member of town meeting. Um I I think it's a great piece of work. Nice job.
Thanks. And Mr. Nixon, I'll also note, because I know my committee, March fifteenth is a Saturday. So it was a goal to have the vote by March fifteenth without um quite naming a date yet. Uh because um it might, I'll, we'll see if it'll align with our school committee meetings or if we'll need to schedule a separate meeting for that as well. But I just want to highlight that we do know it's a Saturday.
No, I I appreciate that. And and I just follow up if if I may, Dr. Matthews, that um there are other sort of statutory things that have to happen in anticipation of town meeting, like for instance, the town manager's budget hearing. Uh as I understand it, wh- this proposal is not intended to, you know, cause delay in the town manager's work or budget hearing or other elements, right? Because at the end of the day, there's still a yellow sheet that has to be developed at a certain point. This is really about driving what those numbers are on the yellow sheet for our budget. There was a time, once upon a time, in the midst of, I believe, um a little bit of a crisis around a transportation bid, where we actually, an hour before town meeting, had two different yellow sheets. We had an A and we had a B. Um I don't envision, I I would invite others on the committee to say so if they disagree. I don't see this as a process that's intended to generate two yellow sheets. That's not what this is about. This is simply about providing the time and space to get community feedback, um which is really lacking, given how we've been doing it for so long.
Dr. Matthews.
Thank you. Um and thanks for this, um all all of you who participated in putting it together. I think we'd sort of, I just one really quick point, which is that I think we'd sort of discussed using the word preliminary um more liberally. Um and so I just wanted to 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 call that out um to to Mr. Nixon's point. Um because I think there's, you know, the the we anticipate, and I think probably folks can see from the presentation that um that our our colleagues in the Department of Special Education have put together tonight that we're sort of investigating many avenues for where we think there are strategic opportunities to invest um in the district and really make the lives of of students better and improve the our ability to deliver um services to students. And so um that sort of February, March timeframe, I I think is gonna be really crucial because obviously we can only get so many of those kinds of presentations, you know, now in January. Um and so I think that process is gonna continue. Um so I just wanted to to say that. But thank you all for your work. This is great. I do love the graphic. And I look forward to working with you all on um continuing our advocacy for the students of Winchester.
Thanks.
I appreciate having the um in the inclusion of February and March to um garner input from the community and um as and and casting as wide a net as we can to get their input to our budget. So I think that's been an area over these many years where there's just very little time short of going to parent association meetings and saying, this is where we are. Uh this is what we have, and okay, we're running with it. But now I think this gives our parent associations and WIMPAC and other community members a chance to say, okay, what else? What else can we think of um that we can do for our students? So I appreciate that. And I love the graphic. And I agree, I think I like the idea, the I would like to see preliminary level services budget in there. Um it did catch my eye too. I wasn't sure if it was to keep it all on one line tidily, but I do like preliminary.
Well, and I'd just like to give a nod out to this commu- uh committee and the um the leadership team as well because I think it was through um discussions that we were having that it was um uh we asked Dr. Ellen Emma when the last time staff was asked what they need instead of what they could make do with. And it had been quite a while. So um I thank you for highlighting that, Dr. Ellen Emma, because um we did think purposely this year about meaningful ways to reach out to the staff proactively before um the budget is done to think about, you know, what we might be missing. So um I'm sure that as we go through this process, there may be some other moments like that. And we may need to think about this and refine going forward. And um thought exchange has been a powerful tool for us. Dr. Hackett, thank you for bringing that to us as well, for really um finding ways to um meaningfully engage with um different stakeholders in our community around topics that are important to them and us. So I I really like the um that this process has come out of a lot of kinds of conversations like that.
Um I'm not looking at my screen right at the moment. I'm dashing back over to the agenda. So if there are no further comments on this, then I will move us on to, then thank you very much, Ms. Bergstrom. Um for your work on both the win as the WIMPAC liaison and also on the finance subcommittee. Um and thank you for all the effort that has gone into to that presentation. Um and then I will move us on at nine oh eight to the policy subcommittee and consideration of approval of policy E F E on civil rights complaint policy for the nutrition for nutrition programs. And this is a second reading. Um the policy subcommittee had brought this to you last in, yes, last week. Um and this is simply oops, I seem to have, okay, this is um a federally required policy from the United States Department of Agriculture, the USDA, that the MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, had included in its um August and September twenty twenty three updates. So we, the policy subcommittee um is recommending that this come forward for or had come to come forward for a first reading and for a subsequent vote. The language that you see in your binders for this E F E policy is from a USDA template that was provided by the MASC.
I'm happy to make a motion to present or to accept the policy E F E as presented.
May I make one suggestion before there's a motion? Ju- just given the history on this one. If if we we typically would read it aloud, it's not terribly long, but at the very least, could we maybe just put it up on screen? Um since it's a little bit new and a little bit different, um and I'm I'm happy to make, I'm happy to second the motion from Ms. Bergstrom.
No, it's a good idea so people can see what uh the policy is we're speaking of.
May I would, I I'd almost ask somebody to read it aloud. It's just not that long, but at the very least, let's get it up there. So people know what we're talking about.
I'm I'm happy to read it very quickly. All right, so policy E F E, the civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs. The Winchester Public Schools is committed to complying with civil rights requirements in all of its programs including including the USDA Food and Nutrition Services and DESI School Food and Nutrition Programs, and specifically the civil rights requirements outlined in Food and Nutrition Program Instruction one one three dash one and the twenty sixteen memorandum of understanding between the USDA FNS Civil Rights Division and the Massachusetts DESI Office for Food and Nutrition Programs. Any person alleging discrimination in the district's school and food nutrition program based on race, color, national origin, sex, or disability, either written or verbal, has the right to file a complaint. The designee at the district slash school level will provide assistance to the individual or individuals, including but not limited to explaining the steps in the complaint process and maintaining a complaint log as required by law. And then it has both the legal reference and a note regarding the procedures template from the USDA Food and Nutrition Services um team. Um and I also would just say, you know, very quickly, it's eh having joined the policy subcommittee when I came on board, the work that it does is highly tedious at times. Um and our chair has been, you know, let me just reiterate for those of you on the committee who've probably heard me hear this before and and those who are watching us on on WinCam, um that the chair has been extremely diligent in making sure that we are in compliance with all requirements, local, federal, and state. Um and is to be commended for the tremendous amount of work that she has taken on to try and bring us up to date. Because it it really, in many cases, had not been reviewed for for ten years, um our policy manual. So thank you to her for that work.
You're here. That's a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you. Um all in favor, uh Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
And Dr. Matthews.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you so much. Um I will move us right along. We will move on to uh anticipated future agenda items. I'm just gonna switch back to my computer screen so I can see this easily. Um Mr. Marin has pulled this up onto the screen, so I will not read it for all. But if there is anything else that anybody would like to ask, please.
May I, may I add just a footnote, Madam Chair, on the UMass enrollment demographic study?
Um I. Yes, that is true.
Clarify for the committee, because we've talked about this a bit. Uh we were expecting it at the end of the year, the end of December, did not come in. Um one of their key members actually got wicked sick with pneumonia, um but is is recovering. Um the the document is very nearly done in draft form. Um the reason you haven't seen anything is because we haven't received it yet. Uh but our expectation is we'll receive it very soon. Um I've had some conversations with the chair, uh with Dr. Hackett and Mr. Marin uh about how we can sort of share this information and 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 incorporate questions. Our thinking right now is perhaps a a joint meeting with the school committee and the E F P B C. It includes a presentation from the consultant team and the opportunity to ask uh questions. Um not sure yet if that's gonna be in person or virtual, but um we're certainly expecting that would happen in February. There are, as we know, other boards and committees who have um an interest in this. Um some with representatives um in this initial sort of phase one process, so we don't want to leave them out either. There may be a follow-up presentation, yet another joint meeting, a larger one for that wider audience. Uh this is tricky because it's a very busy time of year, and and we certainly appreciate that that those who are serving on various boards, committees, um have precious little time. So we're we're gonna do our best, um but w- we need to kind of wait until we get the report. I I have every confidence, though, that although it's coming a little later than we had expected, I don't think that's gonna impact our work at all in the S O I to the MSBA on Morocco. Um this information will come in plenty of time. It's like a three-month window once they open up for core replacement. So not really concerned about that, but just wanted to put that out there. Um I'm kind of hoping we'd have had it by tonight, uh but we don't, but it it's coming soon. I'm told the check is in the mail. So we'll keep you guys posted, and once we get it, we'll let you know.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Otherwise, we'll move on to next meetings, which will be January twenty third next week. Um that will be our public hearing uh on the budget and then followed by a regular meeting. Um and Dr. Hackett, could you just clarify with me um the start time for the public hearing? Did we say that was also six thirty, or are we starting that at six? I just could not remember.
Starting time for the public hearing is six thirty and.
Six thirty.
Session, well, yeah, will follow immediately after.
Okay.
And did you say, Madam Chair, do we agree that was gonna be remote or not, the public hearing on the budget?
We were gonna be posted for in person, right?
We did. Okay, I I'm only asking because when we do it in person, we usually find a snow date. Um so I I didn't know where we left that, but thank you for clarifying that.
Right. I believe the snow date where we left it was if we do not meet in person because of snow, then we will move to Zoom.
Okay, so then we just need to be clear clearer than how that meeting is posted, that that's the plan B, right?
Yep.
Got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um and if I didn't say it already, the next meeting would then be January thirtieth. Uh with that, I will move us to our executive session. Um are the purpose of which is purpose two, to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with Assistant Superintendent Jo- Jennifer Ellen Emma and other non-union administrative personnel as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee. And also for purpose three, which is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the committee. And we will return from um executive session for the final two items on our agenda. So with that, I would accept a motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor, Dr. Matthews?
Aye.
Uh Ms. Bergstrom.
Aye.
Mr. Nixon.
Aye.
And Mr. Hopcroft.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the vote is unanimous, and we will be back shortly.